I'd like to entertain a motion to go forward with Vicky Beaner's, Attorney Vicky Beaner's, recommendation.
So moved, second.
Motion to be made in second, all those in favor. In regards to Executive Session Two, Acquisition of Real Property, I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize an administrative to sign sales and purchase agreement for open space.
Make that form of a motion?
Second.
Motion to be made in second, all those in favor. Thank you for waiting, we didn't really anticipate it was gonna take this long. Approval of Consent Agenda, approval of regular council meeting minutes of May 23, 2016, receipt of minutes from the following boards and commissions, Harbor and Coastal Water Management Commission Two, Personnel Board Two, correspondence received and filed, Richmond Town Council Resolution in opposition to tolling gantries, approval of tax assessor abatements, Mark Russo Administrative Officer Activities Report for May 2016, Town Clerk Scheduling of Public Hearings for Amendments to Town Code on July 25th, Appendix C Sewage and Sewage Disposal Removal of Wastewater Commission, Chapter Thirty, Courts Article Two Municipal Courts, Town Clerk Distribution of Form to Assist Qualified Electors in Filing of Charter Complaints, Town Administrator Memorandum Regarding Health Insurance Consultant, Counselor Perry Request Town Administrator Report on Progress of Main Road Entrance to Tivon and Sign Including Funds Available, Treasurer Denise Sarat Adopted Budget Survey FY 2017 Filed with the Division of Municipal Finance. Would any of the councilors like to pull anything out of executive?
Madam President, I'd like for A.C.A. five, please.
Madam President, C.A. nine.
Anyone else? I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the rest of the consent agenda.
Make that form of a motion?
Second.
Motion to be made in second, all those in favor. For C.H. five, Mark Russo's Administrative Report Activities Report for May 2016, Councilman Palatier.
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions, is Mark here?
No.
Well, I'll ask them to the town administrator in hopes that he can get some traction on them. There was an indication that there was an incomplete application for Longplex in, I just wanted to know whether that, those were easily resolvable issues or they were major?
Yeah.
Okay, that's even better.
Hold on, I just wanna look at his, the exact wording of his report. Oh, we didn't.
It's the second page.
So the notations is what you're asking about?
No, the Development Plan Review on the second page just says the application was deemed incomplete due to a number of outstanding issues.
They're all resolvable.
Okay, great.
I might maybe have one answer for that.
Okay.
I do know that I think we're waiting for building plans.
Oh, okay.
That's why.
That's true.
They didn't submit them, so.
A fairly minor, okay, great.
And we have another issue is the strength of the pavement to be applied to the parking lot underneath the power lines, so National Grid has made some requests about the compaction strength there, and Jim has to accommodate those requests. I thought you were asking about the access which was approved with, on page one, not the development plan.
Oh, no, sorry. The other one is just under miscellaneous number eight, and it just says obtained a $5,000 cash bond from First Bristol to ensure stormwater management system is constructed properly. What, I, I'm unfamiliar with the, a project that First Bristol's doing, I just wanted to, and it's a pretty small amount of money, so.
Yeah, they took over the, if this is the one I think he's referring to, they took over the project on Main Road for the lifespan building.
Oh, okay, that makes sense. All right, and that's a fairly small stormwater system, I imagine. All right, great, thanks. Just move that we receive and file, C.A. five.
Second. Motion to be made in second, all those in favor. C.A. nine, Counselor Perry Request Town Administrator Report on Progress of Main Road Entrance to Tivon and Sign Including Funds Available.
Madam President, fellow councilors, this goes back about a year and a half. I guess there was an accident coming into Tivon on the Main Road, the sign was knocked down. We had a request into the school department to help us with the design and actually try and make the sign for us. I think that fell through.
No.
It's still continuing?
Linda.
Okay.
You can speak.
We submitted a proposal, and we received a response back from Mr. Bellucci at the time that the town was going in a different direction, and you were gonna be doing something with a rock and engraved stone of some sort.
That's pretty much where Steve came down. Steve's not here, so I think we're gonna further this conversation. We have $5,310 available for this purchase from the insurance settlement.
Right.
I mean, I'm sure you can make that work for a sign.
Okay, I mean, it's been a year and a half.
Right.
But if you come into Tivon now, the tattoos, Paula has a.
Has anyone seen that?
Has a mural.
Yeah.
So I'd rather have ours than his.
Right. We've been removing murals all week, so.
So can we discuss this again, or?
Sure, no, well, Councilman Perry asked for an update, and I'll get an update from.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get an estimate from Tivon and Sign Church.
All right, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the C.A. nine as presented.
Motion to be made in second, all those in favor. Public hearings, advertise public hearings, public hearing noise ordinance for St. Teresa's Church, 265 Stafford Road, public hearing to sound variance, live bands, for event to take place on August 5th from 5:00 to 10:00 Saturday, August 6th from noon to 10:00, and Sunday, August 5th from 5:00, from noon to 5:00, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Is someone here from St. Teresa's? Oh, you all right, Lois?
How are you?
Good.
Good.
So it's the same event that you've done every year?
Yes.
Any questions? At this point, I'd like to open it to public hearing. Any comment from the public?
Excuse me, there is gonna be alcohol served, so I'd like to have a police officers there, as we have in the past.
And I'm sure they'd be in agreement with that because that was the arrangements made, and we'll make note of that and make sure that's part of the. Any other comment from the audience? Any other comment from the audience? I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
A move that we grant the noise ordinance for St. Teresa's Church. Let's see, for the feast Friday, August 5th from 5:00 to 10:00, Sunday, August 6th from noon to 10:00, and Sunday, August 7th from 7:00 to, I'm sorry, from noon to 5:00, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
Motion to be made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Don't go anywhere. I'd like to entertain a motion to bring C. one forward, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to be made in second to bring C. one forward, all those in favor. C. one, St. Teresa's Church, 265 Stafford Road, date stated in sound variance, public hearing B. one, request special event outdoor entertainment license, subject to meeting all legal requirements, request F. license beer and wine, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Any discussion? Again, this'll be the same as last year, no real change. I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we grant the special event outdoor entertainment license and a Class F liquor license, subject to meeting all legal requirements.
Second.
Motion to be made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Good luck.
Thank you all very much, thank you.
Public hearings, Town Administrator Public Hearing Continued from June 13th, approval of proposed amendments to fees and fines resolution, including Planning Board Consultant Review Retainers. This has been.
Yeah, this has been going on for a long time. So, I was refreshing my own memory of a memo that I wrote back in the middle of May, updating our research and our recommendations with respect to fees and fines. In your packet, you have a chart, and for each fee and fine that suggested to change, I hope they printed it out for you in color, it should appear in red, and everything else that was no change or just leave it alone was left in black and white. I just wanted to go over this memo quickly in follow-up to the public hearing, first public hearing, first time a lot of this was discussed was back at the end of February of this year. The Harbor Commission worked hard on its schedule for mooring fees and tied the cost of moorings to the size of the boats, using those moorings. There was extensive testimony during the budget process in support of those changes, as well as at that first public hearing, so I've simply left it at respectfully requesting your adoption of that schedule. On item number two with respect to litter, if memory serves me, it was Counselor Mello who asked a question, what is the role of state law with respect to fines on litter? The councilman was correct, there is a state statute. The state statute does not preempt the local ordinance. So at the time, at present, both offenses can be levied against someone who's caught Local fines that would be found at Chapter 38, Section 224 of the code would remain. However, the one place where we are recommending a change is an increase in the fine for littering of electronic waste, TVs, computers, computer monitors, printers, a suggested first offense fine of $100 and a second later offense fine of $250. This would require an amendment of the underlying ordinance, and thus, I don't really think you can accomplish what you're trying to accomplish simply by changing the fee in the schedule. The flea market fee, the proposal that was brought to you was to increase the fee from $350 to $500, but the most common value charged across the state is $100 a year. With Tivon currently at $350 is the second highest in the entire state, but we only give out one. With respect to junkyards, I think we've actually sailed away from what is actually solid legal doctrine. The town currently charges $200, the original request was to increase that to $500, since it is a pre-existing non-conforming use. However, Royal and General Law at 5-21-1 appears to limit this fee to $100, and of the 27 municipalities that issue a junkyard license, 20 of them only charge $100. I think we're, we should be in compliance with state law. There are whole other licensing issues noted in the following paragraph that I'd rather not get into at the moment. On viddling, I recommended to the council that you flip it, so instead of $50 for a viddling license and $25 for a late fee, my suggestion is charge $25 for a vittling license, and then if they're late, charge them $50. On item six, I recommend the elimination of a holiday license. I think it's an anachronism, it's just another reason to nickel and dime, people are trying to get started with something, and I just, quite frankly, it doesn't really serve a public purpose other than the collection of revenue. On the collection and disposal of bulk items, I think we'll all recollect from the first time this has been discussed, it's been discussed many times, there's a downside to increasing the fee to too much on tires and refrigerators and other bulk items that we pick up. If it becomes too expensive to dispose of those things, they start showing up on the side of some of our rural roads. So the only notion here is we have one $5 increase from $25 to $30 for white goods, just because it costs us that to get rid of that, and we're evacuating the CFCs and all the rest of it, and paying the fee for that, and a $10 increase from $15 to $25 for, I forget where that is in the schedule, it's kind of a dangling sentence there. It's for another item on our stuffed sofas, couches, and chairs, would go from $15 to $25. And last, nope, there's three more, animal boarding, we're currently charging $15 a day, the chief is recommending that this fine not change. On parking violations, Councilman Souza asked at February 29th for a $5 increase across several classes of parking violations, because the council felt that we were a little low. I believe the chief is agreeing. The chief recommends that illegal parking during an emergency snow parking ban in the fire lanes should be cited for $75 per offense, which would be an increase. He does not feel that blocking hydrants, he's here to speak for himself, I'm going quickly, he does not believe that blocking hydrants is a common offense, and therefore it really, it doesn't make a whole lot of difference if we change that fee or not. And then the chief is strongly of the view that it is common for handicap parking to be violated, so he is recommending that the fine for this offense be increased from $75 to $100. I'm also recommending item 10 to double the fee for return check. Some of you will remember, I've actually had altercations with people in the building office who've been routinely bouncing large checks to the town, to the point I felt like the individual was trying to work a fraud, so that stopped, but I think we should double the fee from 25 to 50. And lastly, the planning board has gone through some effort to revise its entire fee schedule, and that was attached for you for a separate consideration. The issue there is, the town levies a flat fee, help me out here, Tony, so if you have a very large development and you have a per-unit fee, the total fee for the subdivision request can become a very large number, and we have to justify those fees, they have to relate back to our costs as a town, and I believe that some of those issues were some of the issues the planning board was trying to grapple with by establishing this fee schedule. So those are my recommendations, I don't know how you want to proceed, Madam President. One at a time, since all the subjects are not related, might be one way to do it, unless you find a whole bunch together that you think are, will fly.
Yep. Matt, on the fire department, it's highlighted the mileage from $11 to $15.
I saw the chief's uniform here earlier.
He's here.
I think we missed it, chief, because at one time, the council took up the fire department's requests as just one piece, and you approved them all, and they're all medical procedures.
Right.
But you wanted to go from $11 to $15, and I think we just, we simply didn't catch it the first time.
We may have, I, I know, couldn't hesitate, I'm gonna stand here and say, I.
I don't think we did.
Not remembering exactly what it was.
Presentation to the town council was all about reimbursements from Medicare and Blue Cross and all the rest, and we didn't get to mileage, and I think it's, let's just make it formal, so you're supporting that $15?
Yes.
I couldn't possibly have made that up without your help.
You did a hell of a job.
Can you explain what it is, chief, before you leave?
I'm sorry, council?
Could you explain what it is?
When the rescue goes out, we, try to get technical, to slow it down a little bit, there is a mileage fee from where the scene is to the accident, or to the hospital, there's so much per mile for it, plus there's also for procedures, all we do is, we bundle the procedures into one category, ALS I, ALS II, which would be an advanced life support procedure with IV and oxygen, but if we go beyond with defibrillation, drug administration as such, changes into another category, but mileage is also part of that of what we try to seek reimbursement from.
From insurance companies and out of state.
Right, but the one thing everybody needs to understand is that we, we do not charge town residents. What we do for town residents is we accept by council authority, what I believe goes way back when you started the billing process, we accept what the insurance gives. We take what the insurance gives us, we do not go after town residents. People who are out of town or from other areas, we do, with the exception of if we provide mutual aid, because we want mutual aid companies to provide our citizens exactly the same courtesy we provide them. So it's not a fixed rate, yes, there's a dollar amount there, but we have to accept, just like when you go to your doctors, you have to accept what the doctor gives you.
Thank you.
Any other questions regarding any of these items? I'm gonna do this in one big batch, I think, if there's not a lot of objection.
I have a question on building code, Board of Appeals and zoning Board of Appeals fees.
Where are you?
I am on page, page eight. There are four fees, actually, three fees, I'm sorry, appeal variance and special use permit, they are $115, $230, and $230 respectively, and also, there is a filing fee of $100 for Building Code Board of Appeals. I am, about five years ago, I asked a then-town administrator and a then-building official what the factual basis for those fees were, and they both went, and they, we were supposed to talk about it again, but we never did. The one thing that concerns me is that we talk a lot about getting people to comply with our building and zoning codes, and if requiring variances in special use permits for relatively small building projects at a fee that is potentially more than what the cost of the project is in some cases, because you have advertising and, and whatnot, that we discourage people from actually doing that, and it encourages them to just build the thing they wanted to build, whether it be a shed, or putting up a, putting a deck on, or small, small improvements that require variances. So I don't know if there's any thought to sliding scale or some kind of arrangement, or where these fees come from, I frankly don't know. I think whoever has the information can.
Ma'am? The fees that are charged by the town and Tivon informators of this nature are in line with other communities. The main cost for an application is first, the processing, so some administrative attention is necessary for any application, and secondly, the cost of advertisement, no matter the size of the project, it's still the same advertising is done, so that's why there is no sliding scale. I will say, however, that legislation recently passed in the General Assembly that allows for cities and towns to have certain minor dimensional variances, not handled by the zoning board, but handled administratively by the building official. Some communities have already started to take advantage of that, and what that does is, for a small project on a percentage basis for dimensional variances, which is typically what you're talking about, not the special use permits, it allows for that to just be handled by the building official after a certain procedure that it is. It's new legislation, that's probably the only way to address it, I don't see any other way around it, and I don't see that any, you could have a sliding scale from minor applications opposed to major ones, because basically, the advertising and processing costs are the same.
Yeah, I mean, this is in addition to advertising, so, I mean, theoretically, you could be looking at, for fairly small building projects, you could be looking at $730 check you're gonna have to write in addition to the building permit and everything else. So, I will, we'll track that legislation and see what happens. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council regarding any of these fees?
Just one on the flea market, it still says 500 on this docket we have before me, so I just, what was your recommendation for the flea market?
That was the original recommendations, and I didn't change the proposal, but in my conversation here, the most common value for that license is $100 a year. So I'm kind of leaving the door open for the council to go with that number, that is the most common figure, and really, at $350 a year, Tivon is the second highest, and there's only 17 of the 39 cities and towns actually even issue this.
Is it motion? No, this is a public hearing, so I have to open it up to the public?
I know the Rec. Commission has some.
Anyone in the, John?
John Cudelo, 19, Blueberry Lane. Our last Recreation Commission meeting, we discussed and via unanimous vote, approved to request from the council that they raise the non-resident fee for our summer parks program from $125 to $200. Currently, we charge residents $100, and it was brought forth by one of our members that it was a little, maybe a little unfair that a non-resident could come for only $25 more. And also, we also voted because we had and approved to bring forth to you, but I must admit, we are probably dropping something in your hands a little unfairly because we did not do any further studies or give, you know, make any recommendations or approve any recommendations to be brought to you on folks who may request a waiver for the cost of the parks program. And after I, you know, we did vote to bring that forward to you, to, you know, to recommend to you to consider waiving the fee for the parks program, but I must admit, upon further contemplation since the meeting, I think it might be, and I wouldn't mind if you threw it back to us for our further discussion and maybe bring you more information, we did not discuss any way to measure the need, and we, so.
We don't do that now. We don't grant waivers now.
Currently, we do not, at, you know, and I must admit, it's $100 for a seven-week program. It's very affordable as it stands, and actually, one of the, one of the folks who was asking for the waiver came forward in a relative, I think it was maybe a grandparent, came and paid the full fee. The only, the only reduction we give is if a multiple child, if we have, a family has multiple children in the program, first child is $100, second child is 75, that's for residents. But what we'd like to do is increase the non-resident fee from $125 to $200, and you know, that can, that can bring us anywhere from, you know, $300 or $400 to $750, $850 annually, depending on the non-residents that sign up.
I was just gonna ask you routinely, how many non-residents do we have to?
On average, I bet you it's about a half a dozen, you know, so we're gonna bring in a little bit more money, and with the budget climate the way it is, you know, we would.
John, do you know where they're coming from? Is it Westport, Fall River?
I believe we've had people, some kids from Westport, from Dartmouth, from Fall River.
But, just to make it clear, no resident has ever turned, has ever told, no, because a non-resident is there?
No.
Okay, I just wanna make, because that'll be the next thing.
Nope.
Am I missing something, or it doesn't seem to be a category, so I think we have to make a new category?
I couldn't find it.
No, that's why I came up to add that on there.
Okay. And that's just for the summer park?
Just for the summer parks, just for the summer parks program, yeah.
And you're proposing no sibling discount for non-residents?
No, no sibling discount.
John, would you consider 150 instead of 200?
Well, you know, with, with, with the way things have been going, with the budgets and the pressure on, on the non-essential budgets, I would really like to start to see this parks program cover itself, and every little bit is going to help, you know, if I could squeeze out a few hundred dollars more and cover the salaries for the employees.
Here's my only, my only concern, John, with, you know, we look at the library and we don't want people from Westport, some of us don't want people from Westport going into our library. Now, it looks like we don't want, well, we want the kids to come, but we're gonna charge them more. What happens if St. Anne's Hospital tells us, we don't want any of your residents from Tivon coming to our hospital?
They lose federal funding.
But you know, I do wanna say.
They lose federal funding, but I mean, you know, we.
I might even go right into that. It's only $28 a week, though.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
I mean, that is unbelievable for a program.
I think, I think, I think that $200 fee for this, for this program is still probably half the cost that any of these non-residents would find in their own town.
Oh, it's definitely.
I think it's still very, very, very reasonable, and I don't think it's gonna keep any, any of the non-residents that have been coming or want to come. want to come. I don't think it's gonna be a deterrent. I can't tell you how many people during signups said, "That's all"?
Yeah, I mean, $28 a week. I remember way back when my kids, I would... That's unbelievable.
It is.
Yeah, it's very reasonable, and I'm confident that we won't deter... I'm confident it will not be a deterrent for non-residents to come and sign up. I haven't seen any type of summer programs for that reasonable.
It's a good deal.
It is a good deal.
These fees will be for next year?
That is for this year, but we will be coming to you again for next year, for not only non-residents, but residents.
Have you had signups already, or...
We have had signups, and the window is still open. Nothing has been turned in yet.
So do we have any non-residents that are currently signed up?
We have non-residents who are applying.
Okay.
No one is officially signed up yet. The registration forms are filled out, but nothing's been turned into the town.
Anything further, John?
That was it. That's the only fee right now.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Mrs. Black?
Sally Black, Broadview Drive. I'm here to speak on the flea market. A loyal attendee every weekend. I bought a lovely table and chairs there this weekend. And I agree with Matt. It was hard fitting it in the van, but it all worked out. So I'd like to thank the council and the town for working with that family to get everything back together again, and they're working hard to fix it, so to put that fee on it, which is so high compared to other towns. Yes, Mr. Lambert, you don't... Wanna go with me to the flea market?
My question was, I don't think they can hear you in the back. Is that microphone working?
So anyway, I was talking about the flea market. I said I was a loyal attendee. I bought a nice table and chairs there this weekend, and I thank the council for helping that those people get back on their feet. The whole family came together. It's something you hear about in the old times, when that used to happen. Instead of driving people out, we said, "Yes, let's work together." And that fee's very high, as Matt pointed out, as according to other towns. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Sally.
Madam President?
Wait, this is still public, so does anyone else from the public wish to speak? Does anyone else from the public wish to speak? I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Just wanted to say, I got two tubes of silicone and three paint rollers for $6 at the flea market this weekend. What a deal. And I agree with Sally. We think we need to help them out a little bit. They're putting the roof on now and trying to get the place fixed up, and they're gonna bring it into compliance with our code to make it safe for the public again. And if we can lower this license fee to help them out a little bit, I'd be willing to make that in the form of a motion at the appropriate time.
Any further discussion? So, would anyone like to make a motion with the amendments we spoke of? The flea market decreasing to $100?
That would be my motion.
Summer recreation to $200 for non-residents? And I think those were the only two amendments. Any further discussion?
I'll just move on both. Second.
So, any other discussion? No. This is not including the planning board yet, though. We have to get to that. Okay, so this is just the fines and fees?
Are we doing it individually, or...
What I'm proposing is, is just this document with the resolutions that we made.
Yeah, but the document references the memo for the planning board.
For the planning board.
And also for the mooring fees.
Yes.
Right, I thought I'd do...
It's all the above.
Well, amend the motion, then, to exclude mooring fees and planning board stuff, because it's included in the... It just says, "See attached memo."
Okay.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Mooring fees. Any questions regarding mooring fees? Any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Like to entertain a motion?
Move that we approve the 2017 mooring fee schedule prepared by the Harbor Commission.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Now, the planning board recommendations. Planning board and outside consultant fees. Any discussion?
The only question I have is, what, if any, change from what currently exists, does this represent? Because I don't know what they are currently.
Stu's here.
You've got the chairman of the planning board coming in.
Yep, he's right here. He's right here. Stu.
Before Mr. Hardy begins, I think that you've got a two-pronged approach here. It standardizes what the type of charges will be for the review, because typically, planning board applications do need professional review. That's the first thing. And the second thing, if it's a large development with a lot of units, that's one thing, but oftentimes, situations occur where you'll have a development plan review, and then the question is, is, you know, the work is done, and you have to chase afterwards. Isn't that correct?
Correct.
And this is an opportunity to make sure that the money is there at the beginning, so that the proper review can be done by the professionals for the planning board. But I'll let Mr. Hardy explain this a little bit better.
We've actually made very few changes. We've simply formalized the process, so that applicants, developers, know upfront what is expected of them. Kate used to often charge fees, but we didn't actually have those fees spelled out, so that's why we have this document, to make it very clear, so everybody understands the rules. Our fee schedule has been challenged by a major developer recently, and so we felt it was only prudent to put our fee policy in our subdivision regulations, and make sure that all of our fees are spelled out on paper. I would also like to point out that we are relying more heavily on Steer Engineering, our consulting engineering firm, and Deidre Pava, than we ever have in the past. Deidre has stepped into a lot of the tasks that were handled by Kate Michaud, and so the town needs to get reimbursed for all of her additional work. We cannot make a profit... This is not a profit center, but the state law does allow us to recoup the actual fair costs that we are undertaking. And a lot of those costs relate to the work that Deidre does, going over very complicated engineering plans. We also have advertising costs. We also have costs related to site visits. So there's a lot involved, and it gets more complicated, it seems, as we go on. So our whole purpose here is simply to protect the town, to protect town taxpayers, and to actually get our fair, reasonable, and accurate costs reimbursed to us. I could go through item by item, but that might take a bit.
When you guys look at these fees, do you look at what other communities are charging?
Yes. We actually put together a subcommittee of the planning board. I served on it. Our vice chair, David Saret, served on it. Rosemary Eva served on it, and several other people. Susan Gilz served on it. And we actually, we looked at what other towns charge, to make sure that we're not out of line with those other towns. We also consulted with our town treasurer, to see what monies were actually being brought into the town, and what our actual costs were. And we consulted very carefully with Deidre Pava of Steer Engineering, and took all of her recommendations and suggestions, because she bills the town. So we think we've got a very good, accurate, updated fee schedule.
Any other questions?
Just a quick comment. Thank you very much for your diligence. You always do a great job.
Thank you, Joe.
If there's no further questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the planning board and planning department fees, subject to the attached memo.
Second. Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. We finally got through this.
I do have one question for Mr. Wojcicki. I thought at the meeting in February, we also had put forth changes to the fee schedule for the building inspector's office.
I don't recall that. I took pretty detailed notes. If you have a recollection of specifically what it was that we were going to address...
I think it was that we reduced the percentage. It was like 4% or... And we were reducing it to 3%.
At a certain value over...
Yeah.
I think that was the electrical inspector, right?
It was all of them.
No, I specifically remember the electrical, some of the fees.
Right. Well, I think the problem is, is we're not explicit about... But it is a fact, and the solicitor, I think, will support me on this, that the council has the discretion to change those fees. You're charging a fixed percentage, and once a project becomes very large... We've read in the newspaper that the power plant plans to make a very large investment. And if that investment was the basis of a fee charged by the electrical inspector, the man could retire five times over and travel around the world. So we don't want to do that. We don't create that impediment to business, but I believe what we need to clarify, and I'll follow up on this, was for those permits over a certain dollar value, the council could set the fee after negotiation. Now, that is what appears on both our electrical and mechanical application. It doesn't appear on our building permit application. I think some of what has muddied the waters here, and it just changed this week with the adoption of the state budget, and some of the legislation that went to the governor, the state was going to require us to follow their formula for building fees, building permit fees. And they have decided to back off that and not implement it this year. So it's probably timely. I'll make a note, so that at the next council meeting, Councilor Shabbat, I'll have an update for you. Now, Tony, does that mean they have to leave this open?
No.
No? So, okay.
Would we have to re-advertize for a change in those fees?
I believe we will.
You just voted on all of them, but the public hearing will be continued to the next meeting?
You don't have the building inspector's fees. I need a motion.
I move that we continue the public hearing until the next town council meeting to review the building inspector fees at that point in time.
Second.
I have a motion in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Town council's sitting as a part of licensing. Dawn Brooks Wrap, Acacia Cafe, 2490 Main Road, Unit 3, Victorine and Holiday License, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Is Dawn here?
Hi.
Oh, I thought... So you're expanding your business to now being a cafe on Main Road. Any questions?
First of all, where is it?
It's at 2490...
It's on the side of Helgers, right?
Yeah. Known as White Wine Plaza.
Yes.
It's the third unit.
The one on the left?
So that's the liquor store, the ice cream parlor, and then I would be there.
What used to be Helger Seafood, right? Wasn't that what it was called for a while?
Five years ago.
Yeah. Well, that's how we do it here. What used to be there?
That's the only way we can identify. What was there?
That must be Rhode Island thing.
It is.
It is.
The other is, now that we've just approved of eliminating the holiday license, presumably, we owe $50 to this woman. So just keep that in mind.
Chief.
Madam President, the only thing I'd like to add is, the clerk's office had called to check on this. We have not completed the inspection, because she was not ready for the inspection yet. So it is scheduled in the next week, I believe it is. So just, I'd like that caveat just added to the license, please.
And also, there doesn't appear to be a menu, but does that... Don't we usually require a menu?
There isn't. I gave a menu to the town clerk.
It must have not fallen into the pile. But we'll make sure it's attached to the license.
That was when I was doing the agenda. I think we did see a menu.
Maybe you can just give us a general idea of what's on your menu?
Sure. It's gonna be an extension of my truck, which is... The truck's known. I do a vegetarian black bean burger, a hamburger, I'm gonna do french fries, and then more of our specialty sandwiches, which we do on our truck. I don't know if you wanted to know about...
That's good.
Great.
I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the Victorine license for Dawn Brooks Wrap at 2490 Main Road, Unit 3. Is it Acacia?
It's Acacia.
Acacia Cafe, subject to meeting all legal requirements, including attaching a menu and the aforementioned fire marshal approvals.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Number three is Dawn again. Acacia Food Truck, 2490 Main Road, requests pedaling hawkers license for food truck and recreation beach programs and special events, subject to meeting all legal requirements. You've had this license in the past.
I have. And I did speak to somebody in the office. I need to have the truck, take the truck over to the... Just to have them look at my ANSL system and my...
And that's why he came up here to tell us.
Same thing. Thank you.
Sorry. Any questions?
The only question I had was, there's... We have a hawkers and pedlers license, and we also have the special carve-out in our ordinance specifically for the two beaches. Because we used to have this thing, you couldn't sell food within X amount of feet of, but we carved out the... Is that a separate application process? I remember we used to have a contract that I think your office drew up last year for... We had two? We had two, anyway, last year when we started this.
Yes, but she still needs the hawker pedler license.
So that's gonna be in addition to this?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so she'll... We'll come back for this. Great.
Correct.
Okay.
So are you saying I need something? I just wanted to be clear.
If you're going to be at the beach, yes.
Okay.
Last year, we did a contract with the two vendors. You were one of them, I believe?
No.
No?
No.
Oh, okay.
Well, it had explained to me that there was an ice cream truck that was gonna come to the beach, and I had to contact somebody from the recreation department.
Yeah.
Right.
I think, if I remember correctly last year, correct me if I'm wrong, there was a... There's a thing in the ordinance for an affirmative recommendation from the Recreation Commission, and then we sign a contract or somebody... I don't remember how it works.
You're right. Last year, it was Lokavore.
That's what it was.
And another truck that never actually materialized from Fairbank Farms. But Lokavore operated all year, and it was holding us harmless and picking up your trash and other items that were...
Yeah, the basic stuff. But it is essentially, you know, exclusive contract. You don't... Not everybody can just pull up their food truck to the beach and sell. So that's why we do that.
Okay, just for clarification purposes, I know that it's on the agenda as hawker pedler's license and its food truck recreation in your packet. There is a request to provide service to both beaches. So I would suggest a separate motion. This was recommended by the Rec Board on June 14th, if I'm reading this correctly.
Where... Am I missing?
What are you reading, Kelly?
I don't see it.
Right, directly after St. Teresa Church in your packet.
Right.
There is a... It's name of person or organization... There is a, its name of person or organization is Town and Tredon Recreation Committee.
Oh, here it is.
Yep.
Subject, I would like to request currently registered vendors, Acacia, Pelages, and Osprey Sea Kayak, provide services to both beaches and also Pelages to Bogomash Park during hours of operation. This is approved by the rec. board on June 14th.
Yes, we approve Pelages to be at the beaches and the Bogomash Recreation only. We are asking him not to attend, not to do any vending at Town Farm. There's very little traffic there unless there is a youth organization holding an event, a baseball game, a soccer game, softball game, and they have their own concession stands. But we will bring Ms. Brooks Wrap, we'll put her on our next agenda because we would love for her to go to Fogland Beach. And we, I don't believe last year, and I know when we ask this year, to require them to service both beaches. I think the draw is going to be at Fogland. I think the best fit for the town, for the vendor, will be Fogland Beach. The vendor will have ample volume of customers there, and it will help us draw people, hopefully, through the gate. So, but, once we redo Grinnell's Beach, we would certainly love to have a food truck there as well. But we would not ask her to service both beaches. I think it would be hard for her to split a truck in half and go to both beaches for us.
So, are we limiting them to one beach, or are we allowing them to...
No, they can, they could go to either beach.
We're not requiring.
Not requiring them to go to both. But we're allowing them, if they choose, to pick one up, either one.
And you're recommending Fogland?
I think that's going to be the most logical fit for everyone. It'll help us draw people through the gate at a higher place than Grinnell's Beach, and I think the vendor is going to be more successful there and hopefully come back next year.
Bean burgers, more Fogland thing, I think. The only, the only question I have for Tony is, currently Bogomash is kind of in that envelope of recreation areas. Do we have to amend our ordinance to allow an ice cream truck? That's Pelage, what is Pelage? That's ice cream truck.
We haven't even gotten to that, that one yet.
Yeah, that'd be your next item, but you would need a, an additional motion to allow for the vending at the, both beaches as requested by the rec. department.
So, I'd like to...
All right, then I will move that we approve the hawkers peddlers license for Acacia Cafe Food Truck, subject to meeting all legal requirements, including the aforementioned contract, which I imagine you will arrange.
Yes.
Thank you.
Second.
And, oh, I'm sorry, and the inspection, or did you, assuming that the inspection was done and... Affirmative. Thank you.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm not going to pronounce this name correctly. I already say it. Alejandro Altica. Altega.
Altega.
Altega. Pelages 2008.
That was better than last year.
Last year I...
That was better than last year.
All right. 55 Bacon Street, Patucket, request renewal peddler and hawkers license, including beach areas in Bogomash Park, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Is anyone here from Pelages? This is Alejandro. And you provided this service last year.
Well, we, good evening. My name is Alejandro Altega. That's very good. From 55 Bacon Street, Patucket, Rhode Island. We did not provide this service last year. We've been in town, I think, approximately five or six years with a license, and we were under the impression that we were able to go in there. And we went a few years ago, and last year, somebody asked us, we couldn't go in there. We realized about the ordinance. And I was aware, became aware that they had this thing with vendors to go in and food trucks. So, last year, we were not. We did not provide this particular service.
Any questions? Chief, did you have to inspect the truck, too?
Yes, and the marshal has it scheduled for Wednesday. He has to go to Patucket because he has several trucks that he may be using, so he has to inspect all the trucks. So, it is scheduled for this Wednesday, but it has not been inspected yet.
Chief, do you want to have him test the quality of the ice cream while you're up there and report back?
Oh, I sure could.
The frozen lemonade is very good.
Thank you.
The appointment's at 7:00 AM, so he can have, have a breakfast.
Any questions from the council?
Just a comment, Madam President.
Yes.
It's one of the truly saddest things in life, Alejandro. The last time I saw you, I was 82 pounds lighter than I am now. And I'm not fast anymore.
But you were.
But I was. I bet you still are. Good to see you.
Any, any further questions? I entertain a motion.
I move that we approve hawkers and peddlers license for Alejandro Altega Pelages 2000 Inc., subject to meeting all legal requirements, including the fire marshal inspection and an executed contract for the beach area.
In Bogomash?
In Bogomash.
We have an ordinance that prohibits him from being in Bogomash, so...
Thank you.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those...
My motion doesn't include Bogomash, by the way. We'll pull that out.
So, yours just includes the beach?
Just the beach. We can make a second motion for Bogomash.
Tony, what will require us being able to give him, to let him go to Bogomash?
Change your...
Just a motion? We can motion for that?
Yes.
Okay, so...
I'll amend the motion?
No.
No?
We'll do two separate motions.
Two separate, I'm sorry.
Yep, okay.
Okay, so, we're doing the beach program first. All those in favor? Again, now I'll entertain another motion for the Bogomash Park.
I'll make that motion, form of a motion, to allow Alejandro Altego peddlers and hawkers license, including Bogomash Road.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed. Osprey Sea Kayak.
Good luck.
Oh, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you. Both served them, too.
Osprey Sea and Kayak Adventures, DBA Osprey Sea and Surf Adventures, 489 Old County Road, Westport, Mass., request authorizations for rental recreation equipment at Fogland Beach, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Is anyone here?
I told, I told Sam that I would put it forth for her. Are they running a recreation summer program for us? It's one of our vendors where it's just a kind of a wash for the town. We bring the program in, we sign up the kids, whatever funds come in, go back over to Osprey. And also, last year, they signed a contract and they set up down at Fogland Beach for weekend rentals. So, they, we'd like to have them do that again, again, trying to attract people to Fogland, get them through that gate, and increase attendance there, and hopefully increase our revenues for the beach.
Any questions? Any discussion? I entertain a motion.
Move that we approve the... Sorry? I guess it's a license for the rental of recreation equipment. Is that, there's no, there's no heading on here. Recreational Equipment Rental License. There we go. For Osprey Sea Kayak Adventures, doing businesses, Osprey Sea and Surf Adventures, subject to meeting all legal requirements, including a contract with the town.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Appointments and resignations.
Thank you very much, and I, I must, if I may, thank the former chairperson of the Recreation Commission for getting the food drip vendor truck program started, getting the sea kayak program started. We're going to do our best to keep it going. Thank you.
Thanks, Director. Resignations and appointments, Bradley Green, One Mill Street. Our resignation historical preservation advisory board. I entertain a motion to accept Mr. Green's resignation with regret and thank, and thank him for his service.
So, moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unfinished business, Councilman Palatia, distribution for discussion and possible action, continued from June 13th, meaning town council long-range goals, town council governance policy. Mr. Palatia.
Yes. I guess I'll just start with asking if we are ready to talk about this, and if not, we can move it again. But I want to have a productive conversation about it. And I don't want anybody to feel under pressure of time to do so. So, I'm happy to move it if it's, if it's necessary.
Do we want to move this to the next meeting, or are people prepared?
I guess people are prepared.
Okay. All right. The first item is a long-range goal item. We're coming into the wind-down period for this term, and I thought it might be an opportunity for us to discuss the long-range goals of the town council and the town in general. The charter puts together a pretty concise phraseology that establishes the role of the town council to develop, publish, and review long-range goals, objectives, and strategies. And that is pretty broad-ranging, includes town services, capital improvement, maintenance, equipment, personnel, and staffing. I kind of broke this out in my own thinking into three kind of broad categories. The first is just a simple kind of good governance, getting people, voters and residents and business people, giving them easy access to what's going on, making it easier for the town, the people in town to follow what's going on and participate in what's going on. I think to foster increased dialogue is only a good thing. And it can be a bit clumsy, local government. You know, when you have to pay attention to boards and commissions, and you never know necessarily what's going on at all of these things. So, that's my, my thinking on, on that initial, like I said, sort of simple user-friendliness thing. We've got the new Google Suite, which I think is really a powerful tool that we can use in town hall and throughout the town to just get people on notice of what's going on. You know, major events, meetings, it can really be a source for a lot of information. The other two are longer-term policy goals and strategies that we have as a council to accomplish more major capital events, whether that includes departments and strategies for the acquisition or disposition of property, equipment, et cetera, et cetera. And then I think the third one is the, the super-long-range goals. They're, they're less concrete, they're more abstract. What we would like to see happen in the future, they don't have to be very specific, but they tend to revolve, in my own mind, around land use, harbor. Like I said, they're less, they're less concrete and more abstract. And so, it might be something like, well, we'd like to increase access to the water. We'd like to increase recreation activities and access. But we don't necessarily have discreet strategies or discreet responses to those issues just yet. But those are long-range goals for the town that would make it a better place to live, to work, to exist, to do business, all those sorts of things. And I posit that as, I guess, my thesis for this topic and encourage vigorous debate on the matter. But I'll tell you, I, the simple Google Calendar, I use that as an example because it's a very simple and a very powerful tool for a municipality like this, that we can connect people in ways we weren't able to do in the past. It is so seamless and integrated, it can be, that it really makes paying attention to local politics and local governance so much easier and less stress-free, and more stress-free and less stressful. And so, I put together a model, and I've been fooling around with it on my own account. And it takes some amount of administration, and it takes some amount of coordination, but it's no more difficult than what we're doing now with our scheduling and our calendars. It's just so much easier to get people the information they need and want and get it efficiently throughout the town. So, that's where I'm, I don't mean to dump a project on the clerk's office, but it really, it's more of a replacing something that we're already doing right now by literally writing things on a calendar with a pen. We just translate that into dumping it into, into a Google Calendar. And I'll just give, I don't know how many of you are familiar with the GoogCal, as it's called in some circles, mostly my house. But you, you have a blank slate. You can create as many calendars as you want. They have discrete tabs. You can sign up. The public can sign up for as many or as few of those as they'd like. And the amount of detail you put into them ranges widely. But what I did earlier was I created a, it took me about an hour, created a town council meeting calendar. So, that's the only heading on the calendars, Tredon Town Council. It's got every meeting. You only have to put them in twice because then you recur those meetings throughout the calendar forever. And then you, all you have to do is change the holidays in which we have special meetings and things like that. Or if it's a Monday, that's, say, Martin Luther King Day, you just, you just click and move it over, and it changes that discrete event. You can attach, you can attach future, the agenda for future meetings. You can attach the entire backup. It goes straight onto the cloud so that anybody that wants to look at the backup or the agenda, the agenda for that meeting can just one-click, and they see the whole thing right there. And you can attach minutes to previous meetings. So, it's a resource that can be so easy to navigate. And you can hide that and click on the, the planning board meeting, and that pops up with an, you know, it's really pretty simple. And what the public would do is you make, you set that calendar as public. The public can sign up. They can get immediate email notifications when a change is made to the calendar or there's an uploaded attachment, things like that. It's just, in the world of smartphones and everybody staring at a screen, not everybody, but a lot of people are staring at a screen, it's a simple and effective way to get people more interested in, in what we're doing here and what other people are doing and what other meetings are happening and what, what there is to offer. You go to the Secretary of State's website, there's just a data dump list of committees and boards, half of them that don't exist anymore. It's clunky. You don't really know what exactly is going on, what's being discussed. And this is a way to, to get there. So, that's my pitch on that.
Is that something that could be done, like through Dave Roberts?
You know, I, to an extent, it depends on how you want, how the town, quote-unquote, wants to set it up. You can have a single administrator to control all the calendars. Or you can give that role to someone, to eat, say, the planning board chair or the town council clerk or whatever it is. I think it's, it makes sense to have one person do it because it's not that difficult. And if you're already administering one calendar, you can administer 100 calendars. It's not really a big deal.
Well, I also use it for meetings also, but I haven't, I didn't do the attachments. Well, I also use it for meetings also, but I haven't, I didn't do the attachments. I didn't know you could do that.
You can do attachments, you can set reminders, you can have follow ups. I mean, there's a lot of functionality to it.
Well, it's also a paper saving for us.
Yes.
I see these sheets of paper every week and they get, at the end of the meeting, they get shredded.
Yeah.
You know, I know that we had requested computers far as a long time ago and I don't know what happened with that, but I mean, that's something I think that we should definitely get. We'd save so much paper, it would pay for itself really in a matter of a year or two. On your comment, on the first comment, I agree with you totally and I think we've got to get the boards and commissions to get their minutes sent in a lot earlier. I learn a lot from minutes. I read all the minutes and I pick out different things that are in the minutes. But I mean, sometimes you get these minutes that are, you know, back in January and you get January, February, March, and April. You'll get four sets of minutes. So I agree with you, but I think we've got to hold their foot to the fire here and say, hey, you know, you've got to get them in on a certain amount of time. I know the state gives you six months, but I mean, they've got to get in a lot quicker than that. As far as the goals, I know that when we all were elected, we said in, I think it was five or 10 goals that we were going to work on, or, you know, we were going to combine them all up and then I never seen it anymore, so don't really know what happened with that one. And I think as far as the long term goals, I think you really need a workshop for that.
I think you're probably right.
I mean, it's something that's very important. It's something you've got to put some time into and, you know, have a real good discussion about where we're going to go in five years or 10 years or whatever it might be. So I'd really like to see that happen.
Any further discussion?
And certainly we did talk about getting pads, iPads or whatever it was, but you know, if the money's not in the budget, then we can't move forward with it.
I think that's.
The thing was, it was there. The money was there.
Copy of leases and things like that.
Nancy had the money and then all of a sudden, I don't know, I mean, she's not here right now.
I think it's only fair maybe we should ask.
Yeah, I'm not going to ask.
In the back of my mind.
The money was there.
The money we spend on ink and toner could pay in one year. I just want to say real quickly, Dave talked about the amount, I've saved pretty much every piece of paper that I've taken home from every different committee meeting and it's under my desk and it is this tall from the desk. All right. I mean, I'm saving it all for the last day of the council meeting and I'm going to bring it in just to show if we're not moving forward, it's going to be sitting right there in a big pile on a hand truck and I'm dead serious because we should have been moving forward. The money we're spending on contracts for just the leases, things on, the copy of machines could pay for that.
What I'll do is I'll put it on the next agenda and I'll speak to Nancy about it and we'll have a discussion.
I know that even the, I thought the police chief was kicking in some money, you know, with Nancy, right, chief?
I don't think he's paying attention.
I think he's got plenty of money. What do you think, chief?
He was supposed to.
He did, he did.
He was supposed to give us some money for the computers.
No, I think that was for the municipal clerk. We had to buy the software for that and I think that's where all the money went.
You know, Nancy and I were talking about the, what we would use and how we would transition and I'll start that conversation again when Nancy gets back. Initially, she had presented a proposal to me to have relatively small Windows based tablets that transitioned into, the biggest problem with that is staring at a nine or 10 inch screen for four or five hours and especially a touchscreen, it's not exactly, it's not exactly flawless. What I had suggested was we go to a larger sized unit and use what is referred to as a Chromebook, which is a non-Windows based operating system. It's essentially like your cellphone. It's based on Google Chrome's.
What's the cost of that?
For a 16 inch unit, about $250.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
Because I was in the office with Nancy last week and somebody said, you can get this, and he had one, he said, you get this Chrome for $250.
Yeah, I have one, yeah.
Could you, could use your own laptop too, couldn't you?
You could. I mean, the biggest problem, the biggest problem we have with our backup is the way we present it, the way we scan, the way we create the document itself creates an enormously large file. That's why it needs to be split up into four or five parts. It's all black and white and it is non-searchable. So you essentially have one enormous picture. That's what it is.
Right.
A 300 page picture that you can't search, you can't index, you can't tab, you can't do anything with it and it is massive.
Right.
The way we get around that is with optimizing the Google suite, we can put a lot of things in our drive and our cloud. They can be searchable, they can be interactive because you don't care that they're 150 megs because it can just sit there and then you get rid of it when you're done with it.
Okay.
But it's, it's a two-pronged effort. It's us and the clerk's office getting that.
Okay. Certainly we're all in favor of coming into the 21st century.
Yes.
Even for minutes keeping, I mean, exactly what you're talking about, if the minutes were kept in the same man electronically, it could go right up and be, you know, I mean, it's instead of having to go through the tape and the notes and everything and then, so it'd be instantaneously recorded.
And be searchable.
Yeah.
For people who are looking to, you know, just to give you an idea, to search through minutes of meetings, looking for Stone Bridge remnants from 10 years ago, I had to open every single minute document, scroll through it. If I didn't see Stone Bridge, I discarded it. There's no searchable functionality in any of those. All I would have had to do if it was a searchable document is hit Ctrl F, Stone Bridge, if it doesn't show up, next.
Keyword.
Yeah, exactly, so.
It's tough.
It's time to stop.
I don't disagree. And when Nancy gets back, I'll try and talk to her more about this calendar thing.
That'd be awesome.
Because one of the first things, I'll just, this last anecdote, but one of the first things someone mentioned to me when I got elected six years ago was, boy, it would be nice to have a community calendar that has all sorts of events, not only just municipal meetings, but also what's going on at any given time. I think that is easier today than it was six years ago to administer and manage and we'll try and get there. The second is, in our governance policy, which I still haven't received the final version of, but we amended it late last year, there is a fairly detailed prescription for how the agenda is created and developed and prepared for both council and public consumption. And since the first of the year, and this is a couple of, this is a month old now, this table, I can probably add that we got this agenda at four o'clock, I mean, at 3:15 on Friday. We have not received our agenda or our packet within the time prescribed by the resolution, by the governance policy. And the asterisk notations include 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. Seven out of the last 10 agendas and packets were received with less than two hours remaining of business on Friday and one of them was received on January 25th at 4:07 after town hall had officially closed. All of this just to say that if we want to engage people and if we want ourselves to be as engaged as we can, we need a little bit more exposure. We need to be trying to follow this policy a little bit closer. It's tough to give somebody access to the agenda and the backup, what is essentially Saturday morning if you don't check your email on Friday night, and then only Monday during the day, access for public questions or research at town hall or any of those things. What we should be doing is trying to get at least Friday and Monday, the very best I'd like to see Thursday as well. But I think it gives people that additional time to digest, to ask questions, to be engaged in the public process. And I think we need to think about how we do that. The town clerk is highly empowered in the governance policy for the town council to hold items that aren't quite ready and et cetera. And I think potentially that is something we probably want to give direction on, even if it starts small with little things like licenses. For years, we've just put licenses on the agenda when they're received, even if they are void of all backup, you know, how many times we talked about the liquor license for shakers, I mean, not shakers, for the old Seabreeze. It was a year and a half before they were even ready to consider doing construction. So, you know, those sorts of things, that just takes time away from the council doing productive work, in my opinion. So I think it's both empowering the clerk a little bit more to exercise some of that authority and also being diligent on our own imposed deadlines, which I think it's three o'clock, agenda items should be in by three o'clock on the Tuesday before the Monday following meeting. I think only in the case of time sensitive matters should that be broken and I think we should try to be a little tighter with the way we, because it's also not fair to Leona and whomever else is staying here at four o'clock on Friday afternoon rushing to get the deadline done. I think it'll increase public awareness and public participation and it'll also give us a little bit extra time to digest some of this information. Because when it comes in after four on Friday, I've got to be totally honest with you, I don't, I don't run over to town hall when I get home from work at nine o'clock, so.
What I will say is I've been doing the agendas now for a year and a half and Nancy, Tony, Matt and I, I done with our agenda preparations by noon on Wednesday. At that point Nancy has very little backup, she's still searching for backup. And I'll tell you, on this agenda, some of these items were not on there on Wednesday. So when we completed our agenda meeting, so people were asking her to put things on on Thursday, and I think she's trying to be nice and she tells people no, but then they insist that it's important, it has to be done by next Monday, so we do have to support Nancy and when people complain, just say no.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I know that when we are done, she's searching all day on Wednesday for backup and then I'll call her on Thursday night and she's still not have the backup, but she's still waiting because she's trying to be cooperative.
Well, maybe a simple policy statement to the clerk to say, you know, we support you on this matter and any fallout can come directly, put it on the agenda with your adequate backup and you'll be, I mean.
But she tries.
There's some stuff I appreciate that has to get done, but we've got to get away from this squeezing everybody in on Thursday afternoon because it just doesn't.
I agree.
It's just too late.
I agree.
You know, and I know that people are paying attention to this because the amount of times my phone rings on either Friday night or Saturday morning before I have even seen the backup, asking me questions about it, because people are chomping at the bit come Friday afternoon, they get that agenda and they're ready to dig into it because they only have two or two and a half days to do it.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have one comment. Brett, I totally agree with you on everything that you said. And one more thing. I don't think that anything should be put on an agenda unless we have, we should be having an opportunity to vote on it. If it's not a vote that's going to be taken, then it shouldn't really be on the agenda. You know, like you said with that Seabreeze situation, you listen to it for week after week after week. You know, it should be finalized and then it comes to the council and you vote on it. Not just, you know, sitting here, and like you said, there are other things that we could be doing or working on, but stuff like that, it should be, you know, it's finalized, get it to us and then we vote on it.
I think that's reasonable. I think what I've, and I've got to pick back up again, but I started talking earlier on in this term about creating a checklist or Neil calls it a run sheet, but I don't know if that's a universal term or not, but they've got one in the building office and zoning office. But it essentially sets forth all of the parameters that are required for a license, say, and they're unique to each license and they have boxes to check and signatures to get. It's to prevent people from coming for a license, they got the application, but they have nothing else and us saying, oh, subject to meeting all legal requirements and send them on their way. And we have no mechanism to follow up with whether they actually did the things they said they were going to do or they were required to do or they got the proper approvals. And it just, we continue licenses sometimes, we push things off waiting for new information. It's, if we can get away from this approving things and then saying, well, we'll deal with, based on the assumption that we'll get all the things we're asking for somewhere in the future, I mean, to make a proper decision on things like that, we need the information that they are supposed to provide. So I'll kick that, I was working with the clerk's office on that and I'll try to pick that back up, but.
I mean, even, you know, people that do presentations, that should be a workshop. Have a workshop on it, you know, don't do it in between one of our meetings. Just takes up way too much time. And then maybe sometimes we don't give them enough time because we limit them to 15 minutes or 10 minutes because we want to cut them short. Now, if you're going to make a presentation to us, then let's make it a real presentation. So if you have to have more meetings and have workshops, then so be it.
I just, real quickly.
Go ahead, Joe.
Sometimes when a business is first starting, that bank wants that commitment of that license, so it helps to, you know, push forward their business plan, so I mean, I wouldn't want to set anything up. Sometimes we pass and we, you know, contingent on meeting all legal requirements and generally that happens, everything, the clerk makes sure that all the legal requirements are met before the license is issued, so I just, no, I just, we just have to be cautious that we're not, you know, hindering businesses from.
I don't foresee that, you know, I don't know what, at what point we water down the role of the council and licensing authority by requiring, the things that we, the items we require are presented after the fact. I don't know what the point of being a license granting entity is if we're just going to say, everybody gets a license de facto and then you fill in the blanks later. I don't like that way of doing, I don't like granting a license and then somebody coming to me and saying, oh, did you know that this person owes a million dollars in back taxes and all this other stuff? And you go, well, we could have, that was, first of all, that was a waste of time that we just spent talking about this. And second of all, we could have fixed it at the meeting instead of now we're back and forth, so I will keep.
I understand, you know, there's zoning violations or, like you said, back taxes. All that should be upfront. I'm saying, you know, that a new person coming to town, clean business, wants to start whatever, lava shop, whatever it is, they need that license as part of their, to get the loan because the banks want to make sure they're not going to invest and then get turned out. So it's a double edged sword for the business that's trying to start. So I understand, and certain things like zoning violations, delinquent taxes, yeah, we should know about that prior.
Yeah, I don't want to make it any harder, I just want, I just want the information before we make a decision, so we'll keep an eye out for that, Joe, though.
We'll talk about that.
Watching all this.
Okay, we're going to move on. Town administrator appointment of special legal counsel related to zoning enforcement relating to Fort Cora's property LLC continued from June 13th.
Madam President, I'm recused on this.
As our town solicitor has just noted, because of the various rules of legal practice, he's not permitted to represent us in this matter and thus the town. And thus, the town will need special counsel to go forward. The town has been served with notice of a lawsuit from the owner of the Four Corners entities. There's more than one entity, but it's the same owner. And we are also, regardless of that litigation, we're involved in a very complex, multifaceted negotiation with this landowner to obtain compliance with zoning. The lawsuit names three defendants, the town of Tiverton, the town administrator, and the building zoning official. In our official capacities, not individually. And thus, I just note that some of my comments are colored by who I picked to represent me, but you don't have to listen to my recommendation. I interviewed on the phone all five of these attorneys. They were recommended to me by various different sources, councilman, palateer, forwarded a couple of names. I think you'll see those councilmen, they're both interested. So, what they've done with their written documents is expressed their formal interest in representing the town, and then they've given you a firm background or individual background. For the benefit of anybody watching or listening who doesn't have all five resumes, the names are J. William Harsh, who is a former town solicitor and a sole practitioner, litigator, former DEM director. Two attorneys who are both practicing in the environmental law area and land use area, Chris DeVideo and Brian Wagner. Both of those gentlemen have extensive careers within the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management before launching their legal careers. There's Christine Angustian, who's a, has been in private practice now, it looks like, on her own for the better part of 25 years. Has extensive background in environmental land use law. And S. Paul Ryan, who is a well-known attorney in Rhode Island, who has been town solicitor and land use attorney in various communities. And from his material, I believe he probably emphasized, he certainly did on the phone with me, that he was the author of the zoning code here in town Tiverton. My recommendation memo makes it clear that on a professional basis, I feel like all five of these people are highly qualified, would serve the town well, and I could certainly work with any of them. I will only add this bit of flavor to the dish, if you will. I think this case has much to do, as much to do with maneuvering. I think Councilor Lambert knows what I'm talking about. Making reference to the proper rules of procedure, having the appropriate strategy, as it does the actual land use knowledge and the merits of the case. So, I would only emphasize that a lot of experience around these types of things would be an asset to the town.
Do you have a recommendation for one in particular? After speaking to all of them on the phone?
Sure. I'll read into the record my last paragraph. I personally favor Attorney Harsh's approach to cases. He is well-known as a zealous advocate for his clients.
The, I'm just trying to take notes here. We had asked for a rough, or at least an hourly fee, and it seems through the reading that two of the submissions don't include that data point, one being Attorney Harsh and the other being?
Chris DeVideo.
Chris DeVideo at Marola. I'm not even going to try that one. M-A-D-L.
You know, following instructions is one of those things. I learned in law school, I asked everybody to provide, that's the necessary part of the information, because if they're all equal, then you want the best price. Mr. Harsh has represented the town. He's probably assuming we know, because after the Tiverton crossings case was moving through the process, and it looked like an appeal was going to be taken, Mr. Harsh was represented to be the special counsel for the town. He has a municipal rate, which is very competitive with Tony's rate as town solicitor. I think it's 185. But don't quote me on that, because it's not in writing in front of you.
So, I mean, aside from Chris DeVideo, which we, I'm reading through again, I don't see it, but...
No, I don't think it's there.
Okay, so, he's not listed, but we've got Brian Wagner at 175, I'm sorry, Christine Angustian at 300, and 135 for S. Paul Ryan, and maybe 185, plus or minus, for Bill Harsh. You know, I did forward two names that were forwarded to me, and I asked three or four different people who were familiar with both land use and environmental law, and the common name was Attorney S. Paul Ryan, for whatever that's worth. And his rate is $135 an hour. I didn't know that he was involved in the construction of our zoning ordinance, its amendments, the overlay district, and the subdivision regulations. But that is good, that is good information to know, since this property is in the watershed protection overlay district. So, that would be my recommendation, for whatever it's worth.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Sure, why not? Second, I will move that we appoint Attorney S. Paul Ryan for our special legal counsel relating to the zoning enforcement related to Four Corners Property LLC.
Motion made, seconded, any further discussion from the council?
I just want to say that I feel as though this lawsuit was totally avoidable. I think if the council had been working with this property owner, we could have avoided this lawsuit and worked out the problems out there at the Four Corners. So, I will not be voting in favor of...
It's disgusting.
Any other discussion? Motion's been made, and twice seconded. All those in favor? Against six one. Proposal with Tony.
Could I ask a question on this? I know the vote is completed, but did you ever see if this can go to the trust? Is there any merit for this case to go to the trust, or is that something we can discuss now?
Poor Tony. Go ahead.
I think it's going to be our very first, you know, once I brief Attorney Ryan on what's going on, that will be the first thing I ask him, is can we...
Just a thought.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We needed a lawyer to ask that question, Peter, that's why it was...
No, I agree.
We're still have to enter a defense to a TRO, we're going to have to do that.
Thank you.
All right, Tony.
Can I just ask one more question? What's the timing? I'm sorry, what's the timing?
So, originally...
I don't know what our deadlines are for this.
Right, so, this was placed on the business calendar with Judge Stern in Superior Court. It was scheduled originally for a TRO hearing this morning. He was, the judge was persuaded to postpone this to later this week, giving our special counsel opportunity to come up to speed. The law firm that represents us on labor matters, so that's Kinder, Whalen and Sickitt, entered an appearance for the purpose of having this postponed.
Thank you.
All right, Tony, let's try it again.
Just one more question. Pulling a Columbo on you.
Susan Anderson, proposal of stone wall ordinance. Susan's deferring to you, I think.
Well, you know, I did some research on this, and I actually have a proposal that is quite different than what Ms. Anderson proposed originally, and I will say that her ordinance tracks several other ordinances for stone walls in the state of Rhode Island. So, it's not, I don't want you to get the impression that, you know, she's going out and reinvented the wheel. But there's one ordinance that's kind of out there a little bit, and I want to explain where it is, who drafted it, which one made, and why. I would like to get some direction on this, just to put this out in front of the council, because I actually think it's, although it's a little more complicated, it is more utilitarian and also more legal from a property rights standpoint. And I'm specifically referring to Chapter 228 in the Lincoln Town Code for stone walls. You don't have it in front of you. I want to explain what it is in broad terms before going down that path. It might not be something that the council is interested in, but I do think it's worth hearing about first, and I'll explain why. The ordinance that I drafted there is, it's for historic stone wall protection and preservation. But it is a voluntary program. And what the property owner does is, based upon a certain defined evidences as to the historical nature of the stone wall prior to 1900, assuming that the appropriate town official agrees that it is a historic town wall, a few things happen. The first thing is, is that there's a tax exemption of $5,000 in that community from the assessed, property assessed valuation. That's annual. In exchange for that, a restrictive covenant is placed on the property for the preservation of the stone wall. And the reason that that is in there is, is it becomes a real question, if you have a structure on private property, and you say that it has to be preserved in its ordinary state, the first question always comes up is, well, hey, it's my stone wall, it's on my property, I should be able to do what I want to do with it. In this instance, because there is an incentive, essentially, for the property owner to do this preservation and have the stone wall there, in exchange for that, there's a restrictive covenant on it, and you have a guarantee that the stone wall gets protected. It's not a lot of money, but it is an incentive, and it's an incentive for people to take advantage of it. So, it's slightly different than what Ms. Anderson supplied to you. I can tell you, research will indicate that she is using, she essentially presented to you what's in your packet. That's the form that is used by several communities for this. It is a mandatory program. The stone walls have to either border a state or local road, or be a...
Boundary.
Boundary marker. And in fact, many of those stone walls that are but state and local roads are in fact boundary markers. So, the idea behind that, behind that program is, is that you're preserving boundary markers that oftentimes are in deeds and things of that nature. That said, in the state of Rhode Island, the stone wall that's a boundary marker, if it's between private properties, is typically the center line. But if it's on a road, the stone wall be entirely on the property owner's property. So, I just wanted to put that out to you, to see if that was something the council's interested in. There is an ordinance on there. I do feel that it is a, from a legal standpoint, it is in fact a stronger ordinance, although it's voluntary in nature, there is an incentive program for it.
First question I have is, does it have, do these boundary markers have to be existing boundary markers?
Are we talking about the ordinance that you have?
Any of them. Either the ordinance we have, or the ordinance you're proposing.
With the ordinance that I have suggested...
Suggesting.
It does not have to be a boundary marker. It could be a stone wall that marked off an agricultural field...
Great.
...that is part of a larger property.
Right, and mine is the same way.
All right, great. Is this, Susan, is this different than the draft we saw? No, okay.
No, I was expecting it to be different, because I was waiting for his revision, and he never did it, so that's why it's the same, as it was in May.
Well, I'll just reiterate what I said last time, which is, I think it would be my intent, and I think it's your intent as well, and I imagine the commission's intent to preserve and protect stone walls, historic stone walls in the town, and provide for a user-friendly and logical course of action for folks who are interested, and for us, in the event of modification, or demolition, or some other alteration, so that we can preserve the, essentially, historic artifacts, or, you know, historic structures for the town for future generations. But I don't know what else to say, besides we need some language to...
I think the only thing that I would change is I would take out 20th centuries. That came from the state law.
Yeah.
So, that's my personal opinion, is I would take out the 20th centuries, which the state had in their definition, and just say, you know, 19th century or earlier, which is similar to what Lincoln has.
How about prior to 1900?
Right, prior to 1900.
Tony, could we have a draft of what your proposal is? I had a number of concerns, and hopefully I can remember what they were when we met the first time. But I started off with the concern in the document that we have, that if you look at the definition, if you look at paragraph two under purpose, it really involves a definition. That's how I would take it. While the definition portion is far broader than the second paragraph of the purpose provision. But there's other issues that I do have, and that's why I'd like to have something in front of me. For example, and I don't know, Susan, whether you meant this, for example, it says, and you've broken it down into subsections A and B, and you say, "The alteration or removal of stone walls flanking or abutting town and state roads, or stone walls defining property boundaries within the town shall require prior written approval of the building inspector." And you limit the language to alternation, alteration or removal. Then in subsection B, you actually broadened it. You're now talking about the alteration, relocation, or demolition of an historic stone wall. So, if you look, if you're trying to track the language, and I assumed, I would have assumed you tried to use the same language in both subsections, the only word that's actually repeated is the word alteration. And you go on to say, "The alteration, relocation, or demolition of an historic stone wall as part of any subdivision project must also be approved by the planning board." And I guess then my next question is, well, if you had to go through with alteration and removal, if you have to get the written approval of the building inspector, then what's the purpose of adding relocation and demolition to alteration, so that you now need, to use your language in quotation marks, that it also has to be approved by the planning board? What's the purpose of a second?
This came from Smithfield.
Oh, I understand that.
Both of those came directly from Smithfield.
My only considered...
So, I didn't write it, I just took it from...
Susan, I understand that.
May I?
Would you have a problem, Susan? Because I actually support the concept.
And Portsmouth has the same thing.
Would you object strenuously if Peter and I were to sit down at some point and just sort of draft this so that it's in some acceptable form, and maybe perhaps introduce the concept that, I'm sorry, that Tony is, that Tony's referring to? I could go through this, but the language is...
Like I said, both of these came from Portsmouth and Smithfield, they're identical.
Oh, I understand that. Can I give you the example that really, to me, and I think this makes the argument, it goes on to say, "Historic stone walls in disrepair or neglected condition shall not be removed from their present location." And I say, well, what does that mean? Does that mean if the wall was in good repair, was in good condition... Does that mean if the wall was in good repair, was in good condition, was a relatively new wall, then apparently you could remove it, but you can't remove a wall that's in disrepair or neglect, no matter how bad it is?
No.
I can't believe that
You can't remove any stone walls.
That's not, but that's not what subsection E says.
State law says you can't remove any historic state
Actually, can I jump in?
I know, but what we're trying to do is deal with the ordinance. And I'm going back to the fact that we intend to have this ordinance administered, one by the building inspector under one language, and then it has to be approved also in quotation marks, under a different standard by the planning board. And then they will look at subsection E, and they're specifically being told that you cannot remove, in any way remove, or what's the word here? Remove, or, no, remove, that's it. You cannot remove any dis, any wall that is in disrepair or neglect. So, you know, the question would be, well, okay, what, to me, it would be, then how do you handle a wall that's in good condition?
You're preserving the good condition. You don't have to touch the good condition wall.
Then I would have said that. I guess
Well, then complain to Smithfield and Portsmouth because that's exactly what they did. I mean, that's where I came
I would complain to them if they were here, Susan.
Can I jump in? What you've got in this ordinance, and I actually agree with you, the purpose would have to be expanded, but there's two categories of stone walls here. The first category is the boundary marker stone wall that is either flanking a road or used as a boundary marker between two properties. That's category one. That would be under the control of the building official. The second category of stone walls would be a stone wall that is not a boundary marker and does not flank a state or a local road. In that instance, if the wall were to be removed as part of a subdivision application, perhaps a road is going to go through it, or perhaps there's going to be lots that would, the bicep removed, then the planning board would have to approve the removal of that stone wall.
Tony, what you say makes absolutely good sense if you look at subsection B and you look at subsection C, but neither one of those subsections makes the qualification that you've just made for us.
That's correct, yes.
Can I just?
Yes, that's my point. My point is, I think it can be redrafted to get what Susan is looking for.
Can I just say, this is the exact same conversation we had about two months ago when we talked about this?
Which is why
I know. So, I mean, without additional language or a new draft or something in addition to what we have already seen and hashed out, what exactly are we, what direction do you need from us, Tony? I guess is my
Do you want a rework of the ordinance originally proposed? Or would you like to see a proposed draft of an ordinance as outlined in my comments?
What did we decide three months ago when we talked about this?
This wasn't discussed. This was from additional research.
Okay.
There's two types of ordinances out there. I just want some direction. I apologize if I introduced
I guess I'm concerned with this new concept that there is no protection set out for stone walls that do not fall into this opt-in program. You require, you know, I know it does, but if this is all superfluous and the state is requiring all of these things, then we don't need the ordinance. That's obviously what, we want to layer an ordinance on here to both facilitate our own enforcement and penalties, if necessary, and our own administration of this matter. I guess something that does both of those things, reiterates the state's, I mean, I don't want any falling through the cracks, I suppose. Because if you say that, that it's basically an opt-in program, and somebody says, well, it's not worth the $100 a year I'm going to save on my taxes, I'll just tear it down so I can build a whatever.
Tony, I think we've narrowed it down to two possibilities. The whole draft of this ordinance takes about a page and a half. Why don't you draft both proposals?
Okay.
And we'll make a decision, have Susan review it, see what she's looking for, and we'll go from there. But we'll have both options available to us.
Madam President, please. Just, I kind of looked at this a little different, and I thought we should have sort of an ordinance that's proactive, that tries to get people to restore these walls, and not by dictating that you will do it, or, I don't know, we'll take you to court, but by incentivizing them. And he came close, but my thought was more that if you're willing to spend the money to restore that wall, that there should be maybe a tax incentive for a couple of years to help write off the cost. I didn't come up with a definite number, but I just think if we make it
They have to do it.
So that people want, you know, a lot of people like to, you know, have those walls on their property, adds to the value. I mean, I, again, I say, because I know that you can, I know people looked at me funny when I said you can get this stone at a quarry, but any quarry that does screening of loom and things like this, this stone, I guess, was ice age, it was dragged across, it's multiple stones, and it's in the soil. And everybody knows when the farmers did the fields, they picked the stones up out of the fields and made perimeters around their fields with the stone. Wasn't as neat as you see some of the walls now, but they were there. And some of the older walls, that's how they were built. But the stone, I mean, you know, the incentive to just go and rip out a wall, like you're going to sell the stone, like it's some value to it, that's not really there. I think that's a fable, because like I said, I can go to any construction company around here that screams loom and get all of the stone I need. There's plenty of it in those piles, so. But if we could come up with some sort of a proactive plan where you're incentivized to fix these walls up via, you get to write off the cost over maybe three years on your taxes, that just seems to me would do more to bring the, to bring the walls back than to having people have to go out there in the middle of the night with a backhoe and scoop them up when nobody's looking. And we don't really have a record of where all the, or what the walls. This will actually bring people out of the woodwork that want to restore those walls. And then there'll be a record that that wall, you received the tax breaks, now you're under this guideline that you can't take it down without approval or alter it without approval. But I just think about people's property rights first.
Yeah, I just, two things is that there's two separate issues in that, and I think it's preservation versus restoration. I think, I don't know, I'm not an expert in how you arrange the restoration bit and if you get a tax break, but I'm sure you can consider that, and I think that's a good idea. But I think the value in these walls is not the cost of the materials, it's the fact that they've been here for 100 or 200 or 300 or 400 years, or however long they've been here. And a historic structure or artifact's value is inherent in its, its existence in a place for a time, rather than just merely existing. And so I think there is some of that. We'd rather preserve some, I think we, you know, very often you want to preserve a structure or an artifact rather than restore it. So I think there's probably two highways we can go down, and I think that's, I like that, but.
All right, so I guess the decision is for you to do your proposal.
Two ordinances.
And this one.
Anna. I might add that if you could do them before we meet, we meet the second Wednesday of the month, so if you could give it to me before them, before our meeting, then our board can, can review them.
Of July.
Of July, yeah.
And I was going to suggest we put it at the last Monday in July, which would give you time to review it.
Right, because we meet the second Wednesday of July.
Right, because I want to do it for July, please.
Do you need a motion to that effect?
Yes.
So I move that we request and authorize the town solicitor to prepare two drafts of an ordinance referred to as the stone wall ordinance, based on the conversation we've had, presented at, I'm sorry, whatever date we said. Sorry, I'm clumsy tonight.
Before July, for, for the second Wednesday in July, and then for the last meeting in Monday of the town council.
Great.
Second.
Motion's remain second. Any further discussion?
Could we get kind of a synopsis of the state law, so we understand what the state law is? I don't think I've ever seen the statute on stone wall. So if we could have that for the meeting or before.
I think Susan probably has.
It is, but one of the components of the state law is theft of
Right.
Stones in historic stone walls.
Yeah.
That's the main thrust of it.
Right.
You're not supposed to take that away. You're not supposed to dismantle historic stone walls. And that's actually a criminal act.
Right.
Do they go in how they determine whether it, I mean, I built my wall in '92, but you can't tell it wasn't there in 1892 because it's the same stone.
If I'm not mistaken, Susan, that statute goes to prior to 1900 also.
Yes, it was 17th, 18th, 19th, and 20th centuries is what they had in their definition. But, yeah.
Could I make a recommendation that when you're looking at this, we not set a firm date, but rather a reference point back to a date? Whereas instead of saying, you know, previous, prior to 1900, we say anything older than 100 years, so that in 2100, we're not discounting walls that are 100 years old as not being historic. Do you understand what I'm saying?
That's
Because this will travel, and that'll be a reference point back.
All right, so I have a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor? Thank you, Susan. At this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to bring new business forward, because this people, I know, I'm pretty sure there's people in the audience here.
I move, we move G1 to the current position in the agenda. I'm sorry, G, the whole G.
G, just G, yeah.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
At this point, I have to
Recuse yourself. Town administrator ratification of amendment to contract for tax collector Tony Lynn McGowan for a 2% salary increase to $31,775.
Matt?
Yes.
Tony's here too.
Tony is here. Two weeks ago, the council had, for its background purposes, the opportunity to review and evaluation of the tax collection department and its operations. And this recommendation arises from those evaluation findings, as well as basically an endorsement of Tony Lynn's goals for the next year, and a thank you for her achievement of the, of the goals that she set for this year. The 2% budget is, 2% increases in the budget, which were to increase the salary line from 31,152 to 31,775. The salary, federal employer taxes, and MERS increases, the total cost of this contract for the next year would be $706 higher than this last year.
Let entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to ratify the contract for the tax collector, Tony Lynn McGowan, 2% salary increase to 31,775.
Second.
Any discussion? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. All you do.
Town administrator ratification of amendment to contract for senior director Janice Gomes for a 2% increase to $52,308. I think we, oh, she is here. I thought you left.
You're going to win the endurance prize.
Just taking a little snooze over there.
Matt?
I would say all the same things I just said. By way of background, I think I have a little bit more to say about the senior center in town, because those of you who remember my background, I was director of human services. It was one of the hats I wore in the city of One Socket. And the senior center there was under my direct authority to manage. So I have some familiarity, after four years of that, with what Janice really does every day. And the answer to that is, she services people. And is constantly there, providing people with information and encouragement and addressing the issues that they encounter later in life, whether it's selecting a Medicare plan or whether or not they qualify for certain forms of benefits under various programs, as well as running the nutrition center and Meals on Wheels. I continue to be somewhat in awe of the volume of Meals on Wheels done in a small town like this. Maybe it's because you don't have a 50-story high, senior high-rise building in the middle of town, but you juggle a lot of balls, and I really appreciate the fact that none of them fall to the ground. And one of those balls is your building, and you've done a fine job of being attentive to the needs of the building and keeping it a nice asset for the town. So I recommend this 2% increase. It was included in the town's budget for next year. Budget committee made no change to that. So in the fiscal impact statement, you'll see that the salary would go from 51,031 to 52,308. When you add up all the costs of those, of that increase, it's a $1,443 increase from one year to the next.
I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to ratify, ratification amendment to the contract for the senior center director, Janice Gomes, for a 2% salary decrease, I'm sorry, increase to 52,308.
You're what, a decrease?
I just have a comment. I just wanted to say that, first of all, thank you very much for everything you do. But I wanted to just relay an anecdote. I was on vacation a couple of weeks ago, and I ran into someone who had been on the town council for about a decade, about two or three decades ago. And we were talking about what's going on in town now, and he was mentioning a lot of people I had no idea who they were. But then he said, is Janice still at the senior center? And I said, yes. And he said, don't ever let her go. So
Thank you.
We're not going to let you go.
So I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Thank you, Janice.
Thank you.
At this point, I'd like to bring five up, because I believe Blue Sphere is, is Blue Sphere in the audience? No. All right, well, then who are, is that Brian and Patricia Weeks? All right, let's bring you up. G6, could I have a motion to bring G6 up?
Make a motion to bring G6.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? And thank you for being so patient.
Thank you for agreeing to this. My name is Bill Smith. I'm president of Civil Engineering Concepts. With me tonight are Brian and Patricia Weeks. They own property on Olympia Avenue. It's Victoria, it's Paper Street on the west side of their property. Olympia is how they access their property on the east side. The Weeks own property on Olympia Avenue, 22 Olympia. And what we're hoping to do, there's a sewer interceptor that runs along the railroad tracks, and we would like to tie into that sewer system. We've been to the wastewater district. They've given us a letter approximately two years ago approving that connection. Because that land is owned by DOT, we've gone to DOT to get the appropriate permission to do that in the form of an easement. The Weeks have signed the easement that DOT has drafted. One of the requirements is that the town sign off, since they're the owner of the sewer, that they sign off on that easement as well. And we were hoping that the council would see fit to sign that or to have Mr. Wojcik sign that easement. The second is that sewer line crosses the Paper Street, Victoria Avenue, and originally when we started this process, we talked to the DPW, and they had indicated that we weren't going to need an easement, but there's, there's a different feeling at this point, so we're going to need an easement from the town where that, where that sewer line would actually cross Victoria to get to the sewer line in the right-of-way, the DOT right-of-way.
Tony, would you like to add anything to that? No?
You're asking for two easements. You're asking for a construction easement, and then you're asking for a permanent easement.
That's, that's correct.
Any questions from the council?
Just had one real quick. Isn't that, isn't that a forced main that runs along the
That's a gravity sewer through that section, yes.
Oh, it's gravity through that section?
Yes.
I was going to say that'd be kind of high cost, wow.
No, no, it is a gravity, gravity sewer.
You know, we bear on what you're asking, it was just my curiosity. You know, we bear on what you're asking, it's just my curiosity.
And there's no prob, there's no problems you see with us allowing this? Let entertain a motion, or if there's any further discussion?
I move that we authorize the town's signature, specifically Mr. Wojcik, on an easement for Riedot to allow sewer connection from the subject property to existing sewer main located along railroad tracks in Riedot property, as more fully identified in, do they have an exhibit number?
G5.
I'm sorry?
Oh, G6.
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 Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion?
Before the vote, I just want to say one thing.
We're doing the A1, right?
Yeah, the easement that I have here with the state of Rhode Island, it lists Tiverton as a guarantor. I want you to, I want you to know that that's not what this motion is, and I wouldn't actually recommend that. The motion here is for the town to be granting easement, which I'm fine with. But as far as the state goes, the town will not be a guarantor on that easement.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Could you explain that, Tony? What does that mean?
I just, you know, the grant of easement that you have, the, you have the Riedot, which is the guarantor, and it lists the town of Tiverton as the guarantor. And I don't, that's not something that we're doing here. You've asked for an additional easement from the town, which I think is appropriate. So I don't see where the need is for the town to guarantee anything with the state of Rhode Island. That's all.
Okay. Okay. I was under the impression that because the town owned the sewer line, that that was the reason that DOT was asking that the town sign off on
Yeah, I think you have to.
That DOT easement, and that there's a separate easement where it actually crosses Victoria, that we're trying to get an easement from the town for that segment of the sewer line.
Yeah, so I think the potential source of misunderstanding here, I think we have to do the guarantee. Because the town is gonna own this pipe for quite a long time. It's subject to the TIF bond. So we're gonna have to make some sort of guarantee to the state that this thing is going to be maintained. And it won't be the wastewater district, it won't be the Riedot, it won't be the Weeks. It'll have to be the town, as long as we own it. Now, we may reach a point in time when the bond is paid off, we're probably gonna wanna escape any guarantee. Now, that's a bridge to cross. When we get there, it's gonna be, I'm looking for Denise Sarette's help here, but it's gonna be a little while before that TIF bond is finally defeased completely. But you understand our point of reference here is, I, how else would Riedot approve this transaction? They have to be okay with, with our infrastructure and this connection.
The easement that you have in front of you is not, the pages are not
Numbered.
Tabbed. But subsection N, that has the language about the guarantor.
And what are we guaranteeing?
Just, just so you know what you're doing here, you would be essentially, you know, guaranteeing that you would defend or indemnify the state from any claims or causes of actions arising out of, or in any way related to this easement.
One of the requirements is that the Weeks maintain appropriate insurance for any, any issues that might arise as a condition of this. And in the packet that I did give you, there was an insurance certificate.
Yes. There is, and if that insurance lapses, the, I just want you to know what you're signing, that's all. The town would be on the hook essentially for any of this.
Question. What sort of requirements will be put on the contractor to guarantee the line? I mean, it seems to me the installer would have to have insurance and some sort of a timeline where it's still, he's responsible for anything that would fail.
They would, yes.
So do we need to see the agreement, I mean, with the contractor to ensure this, you know, the integrity of this line for so many years?
Correct, yes. I just want you to know his parts to this.
It goes well beyond that, though. That first paragraph in N, essentially puts the town in a position that in the event that the grantees refuse to, or the grantees or their assignees assume, I assume, refuse or are unable to perform the operation maintenance, repair, or replacement of the tie-in, the town takes, shall expeditiously undertake operation, maintenance, repair, and/or replacement at its sole cost and expense without any right of recovery or offset.
That's correct, yes.
How, I'm having done many sewer connections into this line, but how have the other connections been done? I assume this was standard boilerplate from the DOT. Two houses away, there's another line that ties into this interceptor as well. I don't know what the basis of their agreement with DOT is, but I would assume it's the same language.
This is the first time that I have done one of these for the town. I was not involved in any other houses on this area. I did not research that. But I do want the town council, that's gonna be voting on this, to know that in addition to approving this easement, and that's the motion, by the way, is just for the town's easement, that there is a requirement by the state that they essentially guarantee performance, as Councilman Bellator said, for this line by the grantees, your fines.
Yeah, Tony, I'm having a difficulty understanding what the risk is, though. I mean, could you put it in concrete terms? What risk is the town taking? In terms of, you know, what would it cost? You know, what could go wrong at this point?
The line, like, if plantations drive, the line could fail. There could be a faulty installation. There could be any number of things that happen with a sewer line.
Suppose it fails right now, we'd be responsible.
It doesn't exist.
It doesn't, this is to create the connection.
But there is another line there, so we don't know what the other neighbor's
That's correct, yes.
That's what I'm saying, so.
And frankly, I don't remember talking about, I don't recall granting any sewer easements since I've been here either.
I was just wondering what, what...
I think you'd have to search the records of the wastewater commission to see if they even talked about this. No offense to the solicitor, I don't think there's any analogy to the Wattuppa Plantation situation here. Shoddy workmanship, and poor inspection, and all the things that we allege occurred there. You know, Mr. Smith puts his reputation on this, and I'm sure the other contractors will, as well. I just, I don't know that we can escape. So it's some, I guess we're between a rock and a hard place, Tony. I don't really think Riedot's gonna go along with this if the town doesn't take this legal step. And that would basically be fatal to the attempt to develop this property. So I don't, you know, I think we have to take responsibility for the fact that this is our main interceptor. And you're gonna have to be somebody in that hole all the time and make sure this is, you know, completely copacetic connection. But above and beyond that, I think we're kinda stuck. And that's why it's here on the agenda. These people want to move forward with the property that they bought. And I don't know if there's any other way around it.
I understand, I just want everybody to know what you're getting into. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
It's written with all the diplomatic niceties of the state of Rhode Island. Don't you love that? Under any circumstance, it's pretty broad language.
You should also know, too, just, just wanna make sure there's a disclosure here, that's all. Your trust policy would not cover any failure here.
So I guess I'm less concerned because the project scope doesn't seem to be, it doesn't look like it's very long. It's fairly small.
To one-bedroom home.
Yeah, it's a small, but I'm saying the tie-in length, it's not, it's not a complex problem. What I, I guess I am concerned about is what happens in 25 years? There are new owners, or there's a failure, we are now responsible for that line?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, ultimately, we're gonna be transferring this line to the, to the wastewater district. And at that point, does that liability get assigned to them?
Who would transfer the easement?
He'd have to transfer the easement, yes.
As we've done throughout the town
Yes.
When we set up the Tiverton wastewater district. So
Does that, so does that liability exist? So rewind to, previous to an independent wastewater district, when they were back under the umbrella of the town, and we created, say, a tie-in, a stub somewhere, and we laid some pipe and connected a house. The liability for the failure, who shouldered the liability for the failure? Assuming it's all on, you know, it's in their front yard, and the only easement is a little bit on the roadway?
If the failure is in the street, that would be on the town. If the failure is on the private property, it's the private property only that would have the liability there. Unless there's some negligence on the town's part that could be shown.
But since this is under a paper road, then the liability sits with the town. Under the easement scenario?
Yeah. For the entire, for the, for the easement, for the state, the town has liability also because you're a guarantor for performance by the grantees, it goes beyond what you have.
Yeah, because it's our pipe and it's our road as well. So there's two lines of exposure.
Wouldn't the landowner always have primary liability at this point?
We own the land.
Even if we own the land? If they, if they're taking advantage of an easement to put down the connection, wouldn't the land, would a landowner remain responsible?
Well, they do, but what you're
They'd be primarily responsible. And as far as the state is concerned, we're secondarily liable.
But we're the landowners.
You're guaranteeing
Yeah.
Performance, so you have liability there.
But it doesn't mean that we can't go after another party.
Just means we can't go after the state.
We can't go after the state, we can go after the landowner.
No, you can go after the landowner, but my guess is, the state already did that, and they failed, and now they're, now they're looking for you.
That's why you have that provision, I guess.
Yeah. Just want you to know what you're getting into here.
Quick question, please. How many, how many linear feet of pipe are you, and what size pipe is it?
It's from, oh, it's approximately 31 feet from the easterly edge of Victoria to the interceptor.
It's a little less than four lengths of pipe.
Right.
Is it like a six or eight-inch line?
It's a six-inch line, yes.
So, I mean, it's not a, I don't know. If it was a forced main, there were pumps and everything else, they're putting in a manhole.
There is a manhole that would be within the, the DOT right of way.
All right, so I have a motion on the floor.
There's a thrust block in there, right?
I have a motion on the floor and a second.
This is a legal question, because Tony interrupted our motion to say that, well, it's all right, to say that we were not approving this language, but we were approving sort of more broad authorization to
Well, you said this motion wasn't going to We, by doing this motion, we weren't saying that. And that was my next question.
Well, yeah, because if we don't say that, these nice folks don't get to build their house.
That was my next question. Do we need another motion?
Well, actually, that's why I brought it up, because you're being asked, the town's being asked to sign on to the state's easement, which is in your packet as the guarantor. I just thought it appropriate to let you know what that meant. So you'd need a separate motion for that.
That's what I'm asking. So the motion on the floor, we can still vote on that, and then we need a separate motion?
Correct, yes. That's correct, and I'm sorry to
It's all right. So the motion we have is for like, essentially for 6B, the Victoria Avenue.
Correct, yes.
The one we have legal authority over.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Okay, now, Tony, what is the next motion we need?
That would be to authorize, I'm assuming Matt, to sign on to the Riedot easement as guarantor for the easement entered into between the state, Riedot, and the applicant.
I'll adopt that statement as a motion, then.
Second.
Lee, you have all that? Okay. Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you for waiting so long. All right. Propose Tiverton Town Charter amendments. And I, as I was thinking earlier this evening, when I was looking at this, should we have a special meeting for these amendments?
No.
Okay, I'm just asking, because I'm not sure how
I think what you need is a public hearing after this.
We do after this. All right, propose, okay, Council Perry.
Okay. I think this is something that's been long overdue. And if we had it in here, we wouldn't be in the situation we're in this year. So what I'd like to do is, if you look in our charter on page five, it says qualifications of petition. And I'll read it, and then I'll tell you exactly what I want to add to it. The town clerk shall cause petition signatures to be verified by the Board of Cameras, such verification to be completed no later than 21 days before the financial town referendum. All electoral budget proposals and elector resolutions shall be included on a ballot for the financial town referendum and presented at the financial town hearing, provided that they, and I want to scratch off the rest, that's there. And that would be our record, accompanied by 50 qualified electors' signatures, and add, each such petition shall contain signatures of not less than 10% of the duly qualified electors of the town. The ballot used at such referendum shall be prepared by the registrar in such manner as to include each of the separate petitions for increase and/or decrease in appropriations for the particular budget, not to exceed more than $200,000 increase or decrease. So what that means is that, and maybe Tony can help me with the wording if it's not correct. The budget committee's budget, if this passes, cannot be increased, the appropriations, appropriations, cannot be increased or decreased more than $200,000. So they can't come to us like they did three years ago and reduce it by 300, and they can't come to us like they did two years ago and reduce it by 600, and they can't come to us like they did this year and reduce it by 958,000. Now, this all comes out of, and Tony, I spoke to you, there are four other towns that do financial town referendums, Bristol and Pusmit, I checked both, and they both have this wording in there, 10% of the duly qualified electors of the town.
Correct.
I have a question, please.
Knew you would.
How many days would you have to get 10%? How many days would you have to collect these signatures?
Same as you have now.
That's ridiculous.
How many days is it?
I don't even, no, there's no use in
21 days.
21 days.
You could do it in 21 days.
Or, yeah, well, you want to get 10% to run for office? Should we do that too? If you want to run for town council, you got to get 10% of the electorate.
You know, you keep bringing.
People keep saying we want to be like Portsmouth, you know, we want to be like Portsmouth, we want to be like Bristol. Well, here you go, there's your opportunity.
No, they're talking about building the tax base and keeping taxes down, they're not talking about.
Joe, it is absurd, 50 signatures is absurd, you can get that in an hour.
50 signatures, you get to run for town council.
No.
And you're putting forward policies that cost this town millions of dollars, so, you know. I mean, I went to financial town meetings where a hundred and some people adopted budgets like $30 million, so, I mean, so, you know.
That was the past and this is the future.
We had plenty of people turn out, this is sour grapes, it's all of this.
That's right, Joe.
You lost, now you're mad.
All right, so, what we go from here, Tony, is Dave is proposing this, but we have to have public hearings anyway on this.
Yes, you need a public hearing and you should know that the deadline, Leona, correct me if I'm wrong, get the language out to the Secretary of State is August 10th.
Yes, that's what Nancy said.
So you really need to do this by your last meeting in July. Public hearing and have the proper language ready.
I don't know if I have time to advertise, do I? How many days do I need to advertise?
10 days.
So, no, 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 I do, I just want to make sure.
10 days.
It's 10 days, so. All right. When Nancy gets back, then we'll set up the 10 days of when we should have a meeting. I don't know if we should have this during a regular meeting. We could, we could. It's only one. Okay. So that was your, that was your two, Dave. Tony, you have a charter change, the removal of the wastewater management?
This is a housekeeping change to the Town Charter to reflect the fact that you have the TWWD, it just removes the reference in the charter to the wastewater commission. Just, I consider it to be housekeeping, but something that's necessary to do, and there'll be ordinance changes also suggested to effectuate that.
Would that also have to be discussed at the public hearing? Because we're changing.
Charter, yes, ordinance, no.
Okay. And the Town Administrator has a change?
Madam President, in the past two years, we've, from time to time, discussed the efficacy of the requirement in the Town Charter that the personnel recruitment efforts that we engage in publish personnel recruitment in two newspapers. What we've learned from experience is that, especially with fire department applications, we had a very large number of applications, but only a very small number of those applicants said they found our information in the newspaper. They were finding our job postings online. What I'm going to suggest to the town is language that preserves that strong personnel board and personnel recruiting requirement, that we go out to widely publicized, widely consulted sources of information to recruit candidates, where we not limit ourselves only to newspapers. Newspapers, in fact, have become very expensive, and we rack up quite a bill to get almost nothing back. And when we use employmentapp.com and Police and Fire use it, that service is free to us, and we still manage to get hundreds of people in. So I just want to stick to the spirit of the charter, but not stick necessarily to the letter that exists today.
Okay.
Can I just make a recommendation, if you're looking at this language there, you consider also, I know it's kind of picky, but the top three applicants are recommended to the Town Administrator, but could you also maybe make some language, or in the case of the Town Administrator, they were typically referred to the Town Council. I'm not going to refer the Town Administrator's applicants to the Town Administrator. And maybe also while we're at it, we have this equal opportunity employer language, discrimination against sex, race, creed, or national origin, maybe we could update that to all protected classes in Rhode Island.
Thank you. Tony, how many charter changes can we make in a year? I think it's the comp plan we can't.
There's no limitations.
Right, this is not, okay. Do I need a motion or we'll just advertise for a hearing? I don't really need a motion, do I?
I'd suggest a motion.
Make a motion, advertise for a hearing.
Motion been made and second, any further discussion?
Just to remind anybody that if there is anybody that wants an item for that meeting, they should probably get it in ASAP. You know, members of the public or boards of commissions or whatever.
For a charter change?
Yes. Anyone else has a suggestion?
And I just have one comment, the ordinance changes that are associated with the wastewater commission, that was on the consent agenda, also for a public hearing on July 25th.
Okay.
Any further questions? All those in favor? All right. Town Administrator requests for council guidance and direction regarding trash proposal.
Madam President, throughout the process of deliberation on the budget after the FTR result, I've probably drafted, I believe at this point, at least two, maybe three memos regarding different options for trash. And my request for the council tonight is to please knowingly and consciously direct my activities and those of the solicitor and treasurer to maybe not only one, but only those options that you think are worthy of discussion. In my opinion, it will take a lot of work to pursue some of these initiatives if there's going to be a change to the trash contract. So in order to get ahead of it, I really need to know exactly how you want me to focus my efforts. It is a time-consuming, like I said, effort. Just to put the memo together took a couple hours of research, because not all of these options are common to Rhode Island, yet they are common elsewhere, and there are numerous varieties. So, for instance, there's a lot of options with that franchise arrangement, which I believe is number four, number five on the list, in tonight's memo. Various jurisdictions have managed that contract in different ways, and so I would want to research all of that very thoroughly and come to the table with something that's a good product, rather than research five or six things and knowing full well that it won't have the support of the council. I just would like to be efficient.
Well, I'd just like to say, I like option B.
What option?
B.
The Middletown example.
The Middletown example, and that was also presented.
By the Treasurer.
By the Treasurer, to the Budget Committee.
But it doesn't deal with some of the problems we have. Middletown doesn't have a landfill to close. I don't believe, I don't know how many, we're giving out 200, 230 homes, we're giving free trash bags, it's 1,500 bags a year roughly. Who's going to pick up their trash? So we're now giving them free bags because they can't afford the bags, but we're going to hit them with a $145 bill? It makes no sense at all.
Well, we have, none of us want to do any of this, Joe.
So if we do go that way also.
None of us want, I'm sure the Budget Committee didn't want to.
I understand that, I'm on the floor.
$500,000 because of the CATS budget.
We have 200 people a day on Saturday, with 200 people show up at the dump now, and it's chaos up there. So how are we going to get 800 people through the dump on a Saturday?
Well, that's what Matt would have.
And that also includes additional staff, probably a detail cop to stop people from fighting, trying to get in, oh, come on.
Please, they don't do that in Middletown.
Well, we've never, first off, I don't know if any of you actually ever went up and watched the landfill operation. What we do up there is we have a small truck, and people drive up and they throw their bags into that truck, because we don't allow the traffic to go up the muddy hill and dump out like we're used to years back. So somebody's going to have to drive that truck, somebody's going to have to make sure that people aren't throwing, they're going to be in line waiting to get around that big loop. People are going to want to just throw the stuff everywhere and get out of there.
Well, I don't, I think it's denordally, it's denordally in a lot of communities.
I'm trying to speak, please, stop interrupting me. I have, you gave me the floor.
I gave you the floor, I had the floor.
I requested the floor and you acknowledged me.
I did not, and let's not get into.
Now, the Recycling Landfill Committee had came up with an idea where we would use the pay-as-you-throw money for this one year. We're not talking about taking money out of the count, we're talking about using accounts receivable for bag sales to pay for the rest of the contract, so we can get through this one more contract year, it'll give us a year to buy out, to figure out what we're going to do with trash. So along with that, we would increase bag fees by 50 cents. So that money would be used to pay the contract, and the additional 50 cents on the bags would be a loan. And then that money would be paid back with a little bit more, so we don't interrupt with the closure plan where we have to raise $10 million within a few years to close the landfill. So we've got so much to think about, the people, you know, 230 homes that can't afford that fee, and, you know, it's not really fair either, because everybody paying a flat fee, I only throw like one bag, I literally throw one, maybe two bags a month away.
Then you can go to the dump.
All right, no, I'm not going to go to the dump and there's 800 people waiting to get in there on a Saturday morning. I got better things to do. But those people, somehow their trash is going to have to get picked up. If they can't afford the bags, they can't afford the fee. There was another option I'd like to talk about.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I got the floor now, I got the floor, hold on a minute.
I'm finishing with my.
I want to talk about, I want to talk about A. First of all, Tony, am I wrong or right, that is a restricted account, it was a town council resolution, the money from the bags go into that restricted account to close the landfill. Am I correct about that?
Correct.
So we cannot use the money to make up the $500,000.
The receipts are restricted, which means coming in, it has to go to that account.
So it cannot be pulled out.
It shall go to that account.
No, it cannot.
Yes, it shall, because it won't immediately, plus the interest on that account will be, the bank, the interest pays, so we will be making deposits into that account. But we're not talking about keeping the money out, it is, what you're doing is you're paying with the additional fees for the bags, the 50 cent increase in the bags is going to put that money back in. Alls we're doing is diverting it a little while and then it goes.
We can't, Tony.
I disagree, I disagree, I think we need to have a better.
Tony, give a legal opinion.
I think we need to have a little more research on this.
I'd like to correct one point, and that is, as I recall, and Cecil Leonard is here, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, we actually had, while you were on the Town Council, three separate resolutions to make it clear that this account was restricted. We had three separate resolutions, that was number one. Number two, whatever we do, even aside from the restrictions that were placed on the account by the Town Council, we are under a contract with DEM, and again, this is something Cecil Leonard would have to address, because I wasn't, I wasn't even here at the time. But we had a contract going back to 1995, as I recall, with DEM, that required us to accurately and adequately fund the landfill closing. We never did that until we had the pay-as-you-throw. That's another issue entirely. But that contract with DEM is still in force, as far as I'm concerned, we have an obligation with DEM to make sure that we're putting an adequate.
It doesn't specify a dollar amount, it says that we will make a defined contract.
Yeah, but I think.
Not a dollar amount, because that fluctuates.
Joe, the most we ever put in at any given year was $162,000. I think we can all agree that $162,000 going on for infinity would never pay for the, with the factor of inflation, would never cover the cost of that landfill.
I think we need a little more restriction.
We have both the restrictions and we're under a contract with DEM at this point.
And legal advice that says that you cannot do it.
I think he needs a little more time to look at that and see if we can.
He doesn't need time.
Can I just ask a question so I can understand? How do you get around the fact that it's an operating expenditure of the town of Tiverton, and there is no dedicated revenue stream to fund, to pay for those things?
We're getting ready to pass an ordinance, aren't we?
I don't understand the question.
Couldn't be incorporating an ordinance.
We submitted our budget.
There's got to be a legal way.
We've submitted a budget to the state, a balanced budget, that says we have this amount of revenue, this amount of expenditures, here's where those revenues come from, here's where the expenditures are going to put that money. I don't know how you divert cash flows into some phantom revenue account that is not coming in to the town's general fund to pay for things that the town has encumbered.
How are we going to do it if we institute a fee? They're talking about an enterprise fund or whatever.
Exclusive of the fee, I don't know, I'm not interested in the fee, I'm asking how functionally you get around that. So what is preventing us then from taking money out of the pension fund or out of another fund and paying for expenditures through that? Or diverting other cash flows that are off book?
We're talking about, we're not talking about never putting it back, it's a loan.
You can't loan money to yourself.
Bring the money back in. Like I said, that was, that was an idea that was floated by the committee, if there was a way we could do it, if it's not, there were other options, so we don't have to go with a fee, we don't have to have a clerk that's going to be selling stickers that you, so now you're going to go buy a bag, then you have to buy a sticker and put the sticker on the bag. So there was a separate option that was discussed, it was to go to a two-bag system. If you buy the red bag, you pay. Excuse me, can I speak without being interrupted?
You're representing what happened, you're the only one that spoke about it, you, you.
That's right. I said there was a second option.
Don't say we.
We did discuss it.
No. Everybody disagreed with you.
I'm out of order, I'm here talking about something and people are interrupting me and I'm out of order?
Joe, you're, Joe, you're.
I asked for the floor to try to explain some things here. This is important to people.
Nobody disagrees with you, you have a right to speak, but please don't represent it as the viewpoint of the landfill committee.
You're speaking and people continue to interrupt me.
You're misrepresenting it, it didn't come from the landfill, this is your idea.
This was discussed at the landfill.
By you.
Yeah, and we discussed it as an option.
Okay.
That's what I just said, we discussed it as an option. Now, can I continue, please? Because this is important, all right? There are a lot of people out there that are not going to be able to afford another 145, that's why they voted for the lower budget to begin with, and that's what people need to understand. Now, if we go to a two-bag system, a red bag and say a blue bag, the red bag would cost about $5.
Oh my God.
But your trash would be picked up in front of your house. The blue bag, you could take to the landfill yourself. This A would tell us approximately how many people almost immediately are going to be coming to the landfill.
And how's that going to be?
We don't have to have a clerk selling stamps and it.
Tony, isn't it the same idea though? It's still his money from the bags, that he wants to put it to the general fund.
So is $145, no, it'd be, it'd be a fee to pay for trash, and you wouldn't need the clerk in the office selling stamps that you're going to put on a bag that you have to purchase somewhere else.
And put it on a bag?
It would also help the 230 homes now, because they could still get the red bags and put their trash out. So, you know, it's a lot better than a fee, and it's fair, because for an older couple like my aunt and uncle that put out, you know, a couple of bags a week, they can't go to the dump, they got a little small car and they're not going to go up there in the winter when it's raining and stuff. So if we have to pay for the trash, the most economic way, I think, without adding additional burden to Town Hall where you have 7,000 people trying to come here to buy stamps or whatever it is, is to go to like a two-bag system. And if you want your trash picked up, you buy that red bag, and you put it out on the curb and they pick it up.
It's the same theory, am I right, Tony? You still.
Is this through the pay-as-you-throw?
Yes.
They get the.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, you're telling me we can set up an enterprise fund and collect money, but if we collect it at the store, using a private vendor that saves the town money, then we can't do it, we can't divert, because we can't say that $3 of that bag is going in to pay for trash collection and $2 is still going into the restricted account?
I'd like to see the store that's going to do that for you.
That enterprise fund is totally different, it doesn't affect.
Well, yeah, no, it's, and what it'll end up being is becoming. Well, yeah, no, it's, and what it'll end up being is becoming a sludge fund, because later on, you'll be able to say, well, we got a little extra here.
You know, that is not.
That's probably all I, don't tell me.
Someone else will have the floor now. I'm gonna, would you like to speak?
Yes.
I wasn't going to really have the audience speak, but are you representing?
I am, I'm the recycling committee.
Okay, go ahead.
What Joe was talking about, the first thing about taking out money from the bag program is what the decision on the committee was. Okay. We thought it was a good option for us because it allows us some time, because we have very little time and very little money to go forward with a collection, a curbside collection. We do not have the capability logistics at the landfill to handle people going up there. There's 60, 5,600 households in this town are not going to be able to go up there. So, I don't know where you plan on getting the money from.
5,600 households are not going to go up there.
Steve, I think you would agree that in the discussion we had on that proposal, we all concurred that the matter would have to be submitted to the town solicitor for a legal opinion as to whether we could operate in that fashion and take money from the, from the landfill closure fund. That's exactly what was done. I didn't do it, but I assume Denise did it. And we now have the opinion. It cannot be done. And by the way, that was my opinion, you'll recall, when we discussed it, that it can't be done. So, I'm not going to disagree with our town solicitor at this point.
Not to mention the accounting, the way I admire that this would cause. I mean, how do you account for this kind of transaction? We've loaned ourselves money, and we're going to pay it back from an alternate revenue stream, but the expenses are going to stay the same, and the revenue's not going to change? You're going to have this $500,000 hole somewhere that's just never going to go away.
All right. But the idea of this discussion is for Matt to look into the, to the area that we want to go, and then he will encounter the problems you're saying and try to, try to give us a solution. That's what, that's what this is all about today.
The other thing we haven't talked about is we have to assume that some amount of people are going to opt for private trash collection. I mean, there are people that do it now, and it doesn't even make economic sense to do it. I mean, there are people, my parents' neighbors do it, and I don't know why, but they have a separate contractor come.
Because they don't want to pay for the maroon bags.
But they pay more for the, it doesn't, it doesn't matter. Anyway, but, but there are going to be those people who just privatize the system entirely, I imagine. Just as many people that don't want to go to the dump. I mean, obviously, 6,500 homes aren't going to be going to the dump, and, you know, that's just not going to happen. I don't, I don't know why we couldn't carve out the same benefit for the 230 low-income and elderly residents that would be exempt from paying that excise. I don't think that's unreasonable, but.
Matt, I want to really address my issue to Matt. What I would like to see is a program that people would be already familiar with. We went through a learning process, as you'll recall, with pay-as-you-throw. I don't want to go through that learning process. Again, there's no purpose to it. But I'd like you to come up with a program that would, one, provide for a continuance of the pay-as-you-throw program, which I believe we have an obligation to continue under our contract with DEM, that would continue to put money into the landfill closure fund, so that we would continue with the maroon bags, and those maroon bags would continue to go into the landfill. But secondly, looking to the financial aspect of it, and let's face it, part of the vote was to reduce what the, what our costs were. You can call it tax. You can call it a surcharge. You can call it whatever you want. But I think the average housewife is looking at the bottom line. So, I'd like to find out exactly what we can anticipate will be the additional charge for picking up the recyclables. Now, it's my understanding that Denise had come up with a preliminary number of about $140, something like that. But I, obviously, we have to take into consideration that some people may opt out, so the cost may be higher. Maybe not as many people will opt out as I'm thinking, and maybe the cost will be lower. But I think that a program like this would be something that people are familiar with, understand, and the only complication would be to identify people who have opted into the program, and obviously, you would have to have some way of marking their bins or barrels, so that we have a clear understanding that their recyclables, yes, are going to be picked up under this program. Our role would simply be, in that situation, since we'd be collecting the $140 or whatever the amount is, our job would simply be as a collector. We'd simply be passing on the amount that we're collecting to the, to the trash pickup people, Patriot. You see where I'm, sort of where I'm coming from? I'd like people to feel comfortable with what the program is. I don't want them to go through a whole new learning experience, but that's number one. And number two, I think we'd have one heck of a problem here in town if everybody was allowed to simply go on their own. Can you imagine the mess we'd have next week?
Other people, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sure. I'm sure a good percentage of them wouldn't even know anything had changed. And so, their trash would be out there on the sidewalk, and they'd expect it to be collected. So, I guess what I'm saying is try to make it something that we're as familiar with as possible, something as simple as possible.
So, parsing out what you just said, you more or less described option B, because it closely mirrors what Middletown has done. And I had a conversation with the administrator there, and for the record, he still owes me some documents, but we're all busy people, so give him a pass on this one. But they did struggle for the first couple of years of implementation to get the right amount for the fee, because not as many people participated as they thought. So, they came up short, and they had to back fund their enterprise fund. And they use bins, and they have an annual sticker, and I believe they have a six-month sticker. So, depending on when you move into town, you buy the appropriate timeframe. You put that sticker on your, you have to be identified as having paid your fee. And that's where the cost is. If it's just a sticker, it's one thing. But as soon as you start to utter the word bins, you're talking about a $650,000 to $700,000 outlay. And how is that going to be funded? If you need a specific bin, these bins are $55, $60 each.
As long as we had some marking system. What I'd like to see is that next week, when people put their trash out, it'll be, as far as they're concerned, except for there'll be little modifications, but it'll essentially be the same program once they get their hands on that, whatever the marker is that they have to put on their bin or barrel, to make sure that Patriot is picking up their, their recyclables.
Let's face it, there's a, there's a certain amount of type-one and type-two error now. We don't, the guys driving the trash truck don't know if they've stopped at a house where people have paid their taxes or not. If the trash is out there, and the trash is in a purple bag, they throw it in the back of the truck regardless. We leave it to Tony Lynn to find out if they've paid their taxes or not.
But that's my concern. There has to be, the trash people have to know these people have a sticker. So, it has to be on some kind of bin, or on their barrel. They're going to have to have a barrel or something.
They'll have to have some way of signaling that they've paid that fee.
A maroon bag sitting on a.
Ain't going to do it.
On the curb, it's definitely not going to do it, because there's only one sticker. So, it has to go on something.
Right. Matt, I have a question on where the trash is going to go. If it's a private contractor and he's picking up individual households, if he goes to Johnston, he's going to pay a tipping fee. Same scenario, he comes to Tiverton, he's going to pay nothing.
It's going to go to Tiverton, right?
Is that going to be part of the negotiation on the price?
Well, it's one of the things I'm looking for guidance on. I think those options are available to you.
Or do we rent a scale and put it at the landfill and charge him for tipping?
Charge who?
Yeah.
Whoever picks up the trash.
They bring it to, I think, you know, while you're turning away revenue with private contractors, if an individual hires, say, some other company to pick up their trash, you're losing out on the revenue, but you're also saving capacity at the landfill.
Right.
So, it's probably.
But if we do it with the same, the same contractor right now, it goes to our landfill.
Right.
It wouldn't make any difference.
And the private people just go where it's.
And if somebody wanted to hire a private person, but if we don't change that at all, the same people picking up the trash, it goes to the landfill.
But currently, the private one goes somewhere else. Whoever that private company picks up the trash.
Johnson.
Johnson. Well, it has to go to Johnson.
Johnson.
Well, I think that's, that's a question I need to answer, actually. Madam President, I need to answer Councilor Melo's question, because Tony's going to help me out here. But by law, all municipal solid waste is supposed to be transported either to your municipal landfill or to the central landfill in Johnston. But I don't believe, like ABC, they're going to go to New Bedford, or they're going to go up to the incinerator. Yeah.
That's not our problem.
It's, thank you. Technically, that's not our problem. Right.
Well, I have a few more questions, if I could. One, what are we going to do about the dead ends where everybody just brings their trash in here? Do they just buy one sticker, and then the whole neighborhood that's on that dead end is going to get picked up? I go back again to the two-bag system, because it makes a lot more sense than having to buy a roll of stickers, or having lines of people coming into town hall or public works to pick up rolls of stickers to put on bags that they had to buy at another store.
They're not going to buy rolls. They're going to buy one sticker.
How, okay, so I bought one sticker, and everybody in the neighborhood brings their trash to my house and leaves it out front.
I don't think that.
No.
No.
As long as it's in red bags, how am I going to be denied? This, you know, this is not even, this is what I'm saying. This is such.
No, because.
A bad idea.
Your two-bag system.
Because if you buy the red bag, you cut out all of the bureaucracy, you cut out the sludge fund, and the people just pay directly to dispose of their trash. It's done through the private, it's done through the vendor, and then the town doesn't even have, other than getting that check at the end of the month for the bag sales or a quarter, whatever it is.
Sure, we've got vendors that owe us money. I rarely realize that or not.
Yeah, I'm sure there's always going to be that. There's going to be people who can't afford the 145, but, you know.
We'll find a way to take care of that.
To charge an old woman who's living there the same price as a family of eight doesn't make any sense.
We gave you the floor.
Well, yeah, well, you know, I wish you would bang that when somebody else is speaking. It's very annoying to be interrupted continuously when I'm trying to speak.
Go ahead, Matt.
Madam President, if I could address Councilor Suze's idea. On some levels, Madam President, it's not radically different from the Middletown program, because all you're doing is you're saying the unique identifier is going to be the bag, and you're increasing the price of the bag.
Yeah.
You're actually doubling it. I think there, the issue that we have to research or accommodate is the existence of the pay-as-you-throw program as it is configured now. You've already kind of occupied the field with this idea that you're going to take the proceeds in the bag sale to use for landfill closure. If you had, if you didn't have that, your idea would actually work, because your enterprise fund would be funded through bag sales, and you would have different kinds of bags.
Well, I'm not talking about setting up a separate fund. I'm talking about direct, what we would direct is this. The money that was previously going, the portion of the bag, if it was a dollar or a $2 bag, goes to the landfill closure. The other portion of that money is diverted to pay for trash collection. It simplifies it, because like I said, you don't need people coming to town hall to purchase a sticker or whatever it is. It cuts down on all of that.
Joe.
And we'd also know within a matter of, once the bag program went in, we'd know it, because if, if bag sales slow that much, and people are buying the blue bags, we know we got something we got to do with our landfill. So, I mean, if I don't, you know, and we're running out of time, I guess, because I believe the fiscal year means that July 1st, what happens after July 1st?
The budget committee left in a couple of months of operating. The contract is still in force, but it's when that money says to run out that the solution needs to be in place, and it needs to be fully vetted and considered and approved by this town council. So, I think we've got a very narrow time horizon, four weeks to come up with a solution to this, four to six weeks.
One other request that I would make, Matt, and this will be my final comment on it.
They're never going to do it.
I'd like you to find out for us, I've talked, I've spoken to a couple of ladies. One told me that the program she's on costs $360 a year, whatever the program is. Another lady told me it was $420. I'm not so sure we're not competitive with that.
No, you're way under.
The typical family, and I assume maybe I'm typical, I'm putting out maybe one and a half bags in a week. A $2 bag, so I'm putting out $3 that week. And I'm also being asked to pay $140 for my sticker. I'm coming out better with this type of plan than I would go in with a private contractor.
Correct. The math is kind of easy.
That's what we have to do. We have to make sure we're coming up with a, not a cheaper, not a, you know, a competitive program, so that people would want to stay with what they're already familiar with.
I got a, I got a question.
You lost one.
Madam President, working in a supermarket industry, and that's where mostly your bags are being sold right now, between Stop &amp; Shop and Shores, and I want to know who's going to walk into the corporate office and tell them that you're going to be accountable for $3 for every bag you sell, and you're going to give me those $3. I wonder who the person's going to be to do that, because you're going to get thrown out on your ear. They'll stop selling bags, is what they'll do.
That.
They're not going to tell them. They're going to have to start accounting money for you. Ain't going to happen.
If the treasurer will abide, I have a couple of questions as to how mechanically, no matter what we do, this works on a accounting basis. Because, because right now, it seems like we're all going to kind of squint and pretend there's not this off-book expenditure that we're going to fund with an alternate revenue source that we have yet to establish. Assure me that that's not the case, to the best of your ability.
To the best of my ability. We have $145,000 right now to take us through however long it takes to figure out what we're going to do to fund the rest of it. Depending on what your decision is, is really going to dictate how we do the accounting.
So, explain the enterprise fund to us and why that is legal.
Well, I spoke to the finance, I don't know if she's the, the assistant finance director in Middletown, just on the financial side of it. Talked to Tony Lynn about a couple of the issues. And basically, in a nutshell, what they do is they issue this application with their tax bill every year. It's due on an alternate quarter than their tax quarter to alleviate, you know, the, the traffic coming in and out. It's due October, November 1st every year. So, your sticker runs out October 31st. The sticker is a color-coded, heavy-duty sticker that, and Matt mentioned it earlier, they do have in their town required receptacles. So, they have to have certain receptacles. So, that is something we would have to overcome, similar to the ones that the DPW had gotten recently and some residents have purchased. And every year, the bill goes out. You can come to town hall, just like you pay your tax collection bill. You can mail it in, whichever you prefer. She said that they work with the trash vendor, and similar to what we did at the beginning of pay-as-you-throw, they kind of give everybody a grace period. So, if you, as a homeowner, have the sticker from last year and you haven't renewed yet, they'll give you two or three weeks, and they'll keep picking up your trash until you get a new sticker. You don't get a new sticker after that grace period, they're not picking up your trash. I asked her some of the questions that Joe had raised about people sharing receptacles. I asked her some of the questions that Joe had raised about people sharing receptacles and things like that, and she said they were all concerned about that. But over the years, they've worked out the kinks in the program. I even went so far as to, I have their budget back to 2011. And their trash budget is similar to ours. $620,000, $600,000, $612, $625, those are the last four years. The first year that I have here, they actually were only short $18,000. So, that, they did fund some from the general fund, which I suppose you could do as well. If you've got a program up and running and there was still some money left in that line item, you could appropriate it to the enterprise fund to offset the sticker price or to offset... Well, typically, you deduct the expenses of an enterprise fund from the fund. So, if you had to do a mailing, postage, printing, buying the stickers, that kind of stuff, it would all... The fund is designed to be self-sustaining. So, all of the expenses from the fund are, come out of that revenue.
Wouldn't you have to create a special district or something?
I asked her that question. It's not a tax. It's a fee. I asked her that question. I said, "Did you have to, was there any kind of legal loopholes that you had to go through?" And she said she did not recall. But, you know, I am not a legal expert, so, I mean, we set up special revenue funds all the time for various reasons, grant money. And it's all just to...
They don't pay for operations of the government, sustainable annual operations of the government.
It would be similar to the wastewater, the way we did the billing for wastewater here in town.
But they're a legal entity.
They are now. They, I don't believe they were before.
They weren't. They were a commission.
They were what we referred to as an enterprise fund.
But they're a utility.
Right, and they were, charged user fees.
Boy, I just, I don't know if I'm relieved or scared that there is as simple as just creating an account and providing a service and being able to charge people money for it without establishing any authority whatsoever.
And other towns must be doing it besides Middletown.
They do it, Portsmouth does it, but they, you get a sticker on your car so that you can go to the transfer station, similar to Westport. You get a sticker for your car.
A sticker for the car, and then you get a punch card. And you have to declare the number of bags you have as you enter.
Somerset does something similar. You get a sticker for your car with punch card, how many times you can go to the dump.
Boy, okay. I do worry that...
Well, I certainly, I would imagine we would get some kind of a legal opinion.
What do you think?
Well, I know that other communities do it, but I'm not prepared. I'm not prepared to make and give you an opinion on this tonight. If it's something that you want to pursue, I'll give you a written opinion on it.
Just a quick comment. When Middletown closed their transfer station on Burma Road, the town wanted to go to curbside pickup and to put it into their budget. I seem to remember they were going to exceed the cap by quite a bit by adding this in, and it was reason why they had put this outside of their budget. That was part of the reason they created, like they did, stay under that first year's cap. So, it, and it, they have gone through, and they've had to raise the price several times out there to adjust because people kept dropping out. So, it, we're probably going to, I mean, we may start off at $145, but I think it's going to grow.
Actually, their rate has come down from fiscal year 12 to 13. It was $150, and then it went to $156, and then it's down to $141. So, they do adjust it based on the usage.
And when we start adding in landfill workers and things like that, and we have to pay for that also on top of the cost, plus the 230 people that get free bags, we've got to add that on top of the cost so we can pick up their ways free. So, it's, you know, it's going to grow.
Would anyone else make a comment?
I just want to recap what we've discussed. It sounds like option A, with the pay-as-you-throw bags, increasing the cost, it does not work out legally because we have requirements in place that pay-as-you-throw dollars go into the landfill closure fund and cannot be used to fund trash pickup. Sounds like option B, the Middletown example as described by the town treasurer, Denise Charette. It seems like it's an option that we need to look into. And that's the whole purpose of this agenda item, is to give the town administrator direction. Sounds like option C, which is franchise, didn't get other much weight on the council. Option D, discontinue all service and support for service, leave landfill open. Didn't sound like that was a viable option. Option E is continue service and then look for ways to cut money from other line items and continue with the waste stream disposal. That certainly, you may need to do option E. Even if you decide on an alternate program, you'll still have to probably... $145,000 is not that much, and not much time to get a program up and running. So, you may have to do that option as well. So, my opinion is probably B and E really need to be explored further.
Now, as far as E, we could do that as a temporary measure, Tony, but because the Budget Committee set the budget, it's been certified. We couldn't really do that.
You can do some transfers, but that's about it.
But it's a temporary option until we get another thing in place.
But then that money's gone.
I know.
Yes.
I know. All right, so I'd like a motion, please.
Well, what about, we have basically canceled yard waste pickups for this year, correct?
No, I think we just completed Mays, and we paid for it all. Just wondering how we're going to go forward with those. And then you got in the fall.
Well, I don't know if you made that policy choice or not, for the, it's kind of moot. I mean, you cut $500,000 from the account, so, you know, I think you can kiss yard waste goodbye one way or the other. Right.
Joe, would you like to make a motion with that?
I'll make a motion to instruct the town administrator to research further option B, the Middletown example with a special fund financed by a user fee, and to continue exploring option E, to continue service, but look for available funds to transfer into the account.
On a temporary basis.
On a temporary basis.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Against.
Town administrator's sale of land in the industrial park option to Blue Sphere.
Actually, we maybe need to do the transfers.
Hey, Matt, can I make a comment first? Sure. On, I know we have a Mera coming in front of the town with their... Can't we just wait for their proposal? Because they were interested in buying, I believe, the whole thing. And then we can appear Blue Sphere with the Mera either buying the whole thing or...
Doesn't a Mera, is it an agreement? They know about this?
Yes, they do. I don't think they have any objection to the lot next to them.
They're not opposed to this at all?
No.
Okay.
Well, I wouldn't have had a problem with that anyway. They want to buy the whole park for $2.1 million, not even. What was it?
It was under $2.
It was under $2.
And they're...
I just threw it out as an idea, that's all.
These guys want to pay $24,000 and anything.
Madam President, I think the important point is that this transaction wouldn't prevent a Mera from doing what it wants to do. They've been made aware. So, the memo before the council on item G5 in the agenda from Mr. Russo, who's not here, but I'm well briefed on it. You know, some time ago, there was a very, I don't want to call it a weak letter of intent, but it was, it was just that. It was a letter of intent entered into between the town and Blue Sphere that we would consider selling them an appropriate-sized lot at the appropriate time, should they go forward with their proposal. And that was just enough for them to meet the legal criteria for them to move forward and discuss with National Grid and discuss with the ISO how all of this is going to work for the power connection and the allocation of power generation rights. That process is coming to a conclusion. And National Grid is very close to signing a very important document called a Power Purchase Agreement with Blue Sphere Corporation. The plant that is contemplated now is substantially smaller than the council recalled from your first briefing. When Blue Sphere was initially introduced to you, it was 5 megawatts. There simply isn't enough feedstock in this region to support a 5-megawatt generating facility. So, we are now talking about a 1-megawatt plant. It doesn't mean it's only 20% of the size. It still takes a certain amount of assets to generate power in this fashion, but it's going to generate a lot less power than was originally contemplated. Blue Sphere is looking at a three-month option for the moment, so July, August, and September, for which they'll pay you $5,000. But it's a very important legal instrument. You all know what an option is. So, if we get to the end of the option period and they strike the option, they basically will own the property and they'll have a PNS already negotiated with the town for the purchase price of the property, which at the moment, they are offering $24,000 per acre. That's twice what Mr. Long paid per acre for his. It is within the range. So, when Mr. Scotty did our professional commercial appraisal of the property, he came out to a property range of $23,500 to $27,760 range on a per-acre basis. This is slightly north of the bottom margin of that band. Importantly, Blue Sphere would be responsible for running all utilities to their facility, and that includes sewer. So, they would be bringing sewer up Progress Road at least to their facility. So, they'd be going right by Mr. Long's property, which would be a better connection. And they'd have the stub that much further down Progress Road. So, if a Mera wanted to take off from that point, they would be that much further down the road to do that. At this point, you know, this is recommended by the town planner and I as something that really should go forward. We've been talking to Blue Sphere now for many, many months. It is a renewable energy source. So, it's taking things that would normally be wasted and converting it into energy. And it's really not a large facility at all. It's that 1-megawatt. What it does do is it helps, actually helps everyone involved, National Grid, a Mera, and everybody else because they have a renewable source, a secondary source of power in the park other than the natural gas-fired fossil-fuel-fired plant that's there. So, in the long run, the recommendation is we go forward with this, get another sale under our belts, and look forward to having a taxable entity.
And I just have one question.
Sure.
Because I know, do you know how many trucks per day since we're reducing it down to...
That's where the 20% is a valid ratio to use because you just, you only have so much feedstock.
So, what was the original trucks?
I thought they were saying 38.
38 a week?
Yeah, so I think you're looking at 1/5 of that.
If you want to see an identical plant to this that's up and running right now at the Stop &amp; Shop warehouse.
Yeah.
It's identical.
Question, please. 25% of the sale of the industrial park was going in for infrastructure needs. Is, with the amount of truck traffic we're going to see there, I mean, we need some improvements on that intersection, plus along with the number of cars that are going to be coming. I'm just wondering what, and what's the plan going forward to start to get some engineering done there on that intersection?
Madam President, I absolutely 100% completely agree with Counselor Suza. And it's also a line of discussion that I've had with Steer through Deirdre Piba because I think the three of us share the exact same concern. I don't believe that that small road will adequately handle the traffic generated by a popular indoor sports complex without some adjustment. There's going to need to be an adjustment. I think fixing that intersection will be a qualified use of the fund set aside and raised from the fund, from the sale of property in the park. So, we have 25% of the proceeds from Long, and 25% of the proceeds of this sale would actually probably fund a fairly decent engineering study for that corner.
Are we going to see that on the agenda coming up?
It's no less than 25%. So, what we haven't done yet, and it's an important conversation, is an allocation of the proceeds from Longplex and from Blue Sphere. That allocation must be made by the town council.
I mean, that's the Long Complex, I mean, they're basically building, aren't they?
No.
Just, I thought they were already taking trees down up there.
Well, they could. I mean, but that doesn't mean they're building. They've got quite a few things to go through to be ready to really rock and roll.
And then I just, oh, I'm sorry, Joe.
Well, I was just going to say, I'm just, at some point forward, moving forward, we need to get to work on that because it's going to move quickly once... We want to make sure the road's in place prior to opening, kind of like the casino.
Right.
So, the revenue stream now, could you tell us a little bit more? Once this plant up and running, how much this town expects to receive per year?
I'd really recommend that we get this deal penned before December 31st, 2016. So, let's go through this a little bit. You've got the proceeds of the real estate transaction. Then you'd have your property tax, your real property tax. The building would be assessed, as would the real estate under it, would be assessed at Tiverton's unified rate at the moment. The tangible tax, right now, the town has the authority to enter into a payment-in-lieu-of-taxes treaty with Blue Sphere. And our leverage in that conversation would be, well, what would our tax assessor say that tangible property is worth? And how long is its useful life, its depreciable life? And we could figure out a tax stream over that course of that year, of those years. And that would be our leverage to come to the table and say, "Well, you would normally owe us $1 million, but we'll let you have it for $800,000 as long as you guarantee to a payment schedule." And pilot agreements are not part of the levy, very important for the town. The state of Rhode Island, in its infinite, overabundant wisdom, is interjecting itself into this conversation. And they want to set a uniform flat rate for all renewable energy sources. $5,000 a megawatt. So, this is a 1-megawatt plant, so the math is fantastically easy. It's $5,000 is what we would get for tangible taxes. In lieu of tangible taxes, it would be $5,000. If you back out the town's tax rate, that's, you're saying you get about $263,000 worth of tangible property there. That's not even close to what the tangible property would be worth on a current basis with the charts that we use, the depreciation charts. But it would be in perpetuity, so there'd be no depreciation taken out of that. So, I don't know, you know, we'd have to do the math. How expensive is the plant? What would the tangible tax be out over its useful life? And then compare that to $5,000 a year for every year of the same period. It's still going to be a loss. I can't see how they're doing us any favors, but they want to put that in place through the administrative rulemaking process for 2017, calendar 2017.
So, what are they considered tangible?
So, the difficulty is this. You may have heard of this case. In North Kingston, the town was trying to collect a tax on a windmill. The windmill was, the case went all the way to the Supreme Court. The windmill was considered an exempt manufacturing tool. And different people have different opinions. I got to tell you something. I don't think this case really has broad application. The town in North Kingston did not prosecute the case aggressively. They missed timelines, and they didn't bring all their best arguments to the court. So, it was a very unique holding for a Supreme Court to make. However, in an abundance of caution, the General Assembly determined that they would, they're going to overrule that case, whether it applied to everyone or not, and just apply that one flat rate for everybody. So, you build a 10... So you build a 10-megawatt solar farm, you're 50,000, is what you're going to get. A one-megawatt digester, it's going to be 5,000 a year, period, on the tangible piece, not the real estate piece.
But what, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but if the digester is a permanent fixture of the real estate, then how do you separate that as tangible property? Or how do you categorize it as tangible property?
The equipment used in the generation of that electricity, and that's what, I did ask this question. So we got this briefing from Energy Resources Friday afternoon over lunch, all the town administrators. And I asked a question, and nobody really knows the answer yet, because the rulemaking process hasn't started. Where do you draw the line?
Yeah.
Because you can't have a digester without feedstock. You can't have feedstock without trucks. So trucks are part of the, well, the trucks normally would be part of a tangible tax. But you see where I'm going, is what is it that's fixed to the side of the building that's going to be necessary part of holding the building up versus necessary part of generating the electricity? There's going to be that conversation. Because frankly, I think it's just a cinder block shell, and it's not going to have very high value. The real value is the guts of the building.
Yeah, but those are permanent fixtures. They're attached in a relatively permanent way to the structure or the land underneath. But that's another story, that's another conversation. The only question I have is, we have no language for an option agreement or a purchase and sale.
No, so this would be, what I'm seeking is your authorization to get that in front of you very fast. So I'm putting you on notice that if you agree that you would go forward with this, we can pen an option quickly, be on your next docket. But it would be, I would be hoping forward to be quick.
Any further discussion?
Just one question. So the National Grid's Rhode Island Renewable Energy RFP, that has nothing, that won't interfere with the solar power potential setup at the industrial park without hooking in?
It shouldn't, Councilor, Madam President, I'll answer Councilor Melo's question. It shouldn't, because it's a different form of renewable energy.
Could you just travel a check?
As long as our interconnection here can handle what's being generated, I think we'd be all right.
So the state's proposal of this $5,000 max, basically, tangible tax, that would apply to solar as well?
All renewables, so wind, solar, and for some reason, they've thrown digesters into this.
So if we do it before the end of the year, we have a shot at having our own pilot agreement or...
Correct, and it would be vowed, and it would be upheld.
So in effect, the state is going to put the burden of these renewable energies onto the town that is installing them?
Yes.
Yeah. And they're shifting the burden of, they're in a sort of heavy-handed way. They're protecting those towns that don't negotiate very well and have come away with 2,500 bucks a megawatt hour as the going rate. And they're not helping us, because we would hire a consultant, get somebody, the market rate is closer to seven, and we want to be there.
Now, with this new rule, does the facility need to be built before the end of the year?
No.
Or just an agreement?
The agreement.
Agreement has to be made. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Not good news, but...
I could entertain a motion? Or not?
Thank you, but I can't find it. Okay, where are we? I'll make a motion to...
So you're directing me to negotiate...
Have this town administrator.
Yep.
You're directing that to negotiate with...
To negotiate with Blue Sphere for a purchase and sale agreement.
Yes. Do I have a second?
PNS with an option, can I just...
A second, just one quick, I don't know if there's any way during your negotiations you can discuss the intersection with Blue Sphere. I mean, it may be a way to get that work done via, as part of our sales and purchase agreement. In other words, I mean, they're going to have construction crews there, it'd be so much easier if a private company could move that forward, as far as the update.
I have a motion on the table, in a second. All those in favor? Thank you. Town Solicitor Resolution Creating Stone Bridge Department Ad-Hoc Committee. Do you have it in front of you?
This is a fairly basic resolution, just reflecting the action that you took at the June 22nd meeting.
Madam President, I have two questions. One is, I've reached out to both Dave Soret and Dave Vanier, and spoke to them about this. They are both happy to be on board. Part of that conversation reminded me, and when I read this, somebody else actually pointed out to it, it specifies two council members and two members of the public. Is it possible to specifically name people by name in this resolution? Because I think the four people that we have are uniquely qualified or uniquely competent or whatever the word is. And I wouldn't just say if any, because two of us are, November is, you know, a change of guard, and also there are harbor commission and planning board appointments coming up as well, I think actually in July. So I don't want the work of this group to be interrupted by all of the, you know, three or four people, the majority of this group, either don't seek reappointment or don't get reelected, and then we have to appoint two, four people who have absolutely no interest in doing this whatsoever and have, don't have the skillset to accomplish it. So that's my question.
Yes, you can.
I would specifically request that we do that, so that in the event, because this project is going to take probably more than one year.
Yep.
And if, worst-case scenario, and if I'm not here in a year, or if Peter's not here in a year, or if Dave Soret and Dave Vanier are not here in a year, then this whole thing is a waste of time.
So could we just, whose members shall be, and we'll put who they are? Brett Palatia?
Yes.
Peter Mello? David Soret?
Dave Vanier and Dave Soret. And they are both very eager to start work, by the way. The other is, I wanted to ask this peer review clause in here, and I wanted to ask what legal maneuvering we have. If this committee decides that a peer review is not necessary, do, are we within the authority granted to change course or something, or not execute that?
The town council voted for a peer review.
Yeah, without getting into too much detail, we don't know what we're reviewing, first of all. Second of all, I'm not positive it's necessary. If we first don't know what plan we're reviewing, I just don't want to be forced to spend money if it's not necessary.
It's in the whereas clause, which reflects what the town council wished to do at the time, but the language is precatory.
Which means what?
That means if it appears as though the peer review is not something that you should enter into, you would come back to the town council and just say that you'd like to change it.
Okay, excellent. Because, I mean, I don't, if we decide to go a different direction with a design or whatever, or we look at, you know, whatever the, whatever will happen, I don't know what will happen yet, but I don't want to be forced to spend $13,000 if we don't have to.
So I think what you'd have to do is come back to...
That's fine, I just want that flexibility.
I know there's been conversation about that, Madam President. I think what we're looking for are the structural calculations, the actual mathematics that went into the material specifications. And if it's provided, would any of us have the engineering acumen to really understand it? But it may not cost $13,000 either to do that.
All right, so is that okay with everyone, with the amendments?
I just have one question. Just reading this, I don't see an end date to this. Should we have an end date?
I think when the, the end date to me would be when the project is completed. Do you all agree?
Yeah, the magic document is an acceptance.
So I don't, yeah, I know what you're saying, but I don't know when that date would be.
Neither do I.
I just, one quick question, please. Would our town's engineer be available for this committee? And I'll tell you why. I read a lot of the information that you gave me, and it's, some of it, I guess, if you're not, you know, too familiar with construction, but it would seem to me the committee should really come up to speed quickly on the construction of that bridge. Because I think when you do, you'll find that some of the stuff that was presented to us was kind of bizarre. I mean, it's, by the engineering firm that's been on this for years, I, so I think it's important that some of their first meetings would be strictly technical.
Yeah, the price estimate that I've gotten, and I will share with this committee, came from our town engineering consulting firm, Steer. So I went there first.
For their first few meetings, I think that should be a priority, that she is at those meetings.
Oh, absolutely. To pay for her, but that's fine, it'll be worth it.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't make her a member of the committee, but I think certainly will make use of it. And just by way of, the way this committee is going to work effectively and efficiently is a small group of people who are very focused on a certain group of things. And I don't, I think we went through this, but Dave Vanier knows the harbor, he knows the issues with the waterfront and erosion and things like that, I think they call it scrubbing. And Dave Soret is scouring, that's what it is, sorry. Dave Soret is, you know, a veteran construction manager and knows what the heck he's talking about, because he took me to school on some things. And, you know, I'm not an engineer, but I've been doing consulting work for major projects for just under 12 years now, and I think between, and Peter as well, is passionate about this, and he knows the issues. I think between the four of us, and we can push this thing up the hill quickly and efficiently.
Peter slept at a hotel six, so he's...
That's right.
All right, so I'd entertain a motion to approve the resolution establishing a stone bridge above, above an ad hoc subcommittee with the amendments that were mentioned.
Make that form of a motion?
You've got all those, Leona? A second?
I wrote them down.
Great. I mean, it's pretty simple.
I have a, do I have a second? Motion being made in second, all those in favor?
Thank you very much.
And I'll come by, and I'll come by in the morning to sign it.
Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just by way of update, we've got the plans from VHB, the full set of drawings and the application documents, and we're reviewing.
All right, we're going back up to financial business. Chief Lloyd, to invite a promise. Request account from, transfer from account 3310, 5107 holidays to account 3310, 6931 operational technologies, $34,000.
Thirty-four hundred.
Thirty-four hundred, oh my gosh.
I'll take 34,000, but I can't spend it all. This is, again, last year, because of the change in the personnel status, these were holidays that were not paid out. We did receive, just the other day, several more bills, operational technologies for computer issues, for technical work that had to be done in the station on the computers. And this should cover those bills that have come in.
I'd entertain a motion for that transfer.
Make that form of a motion?
Second.
Motion being made in second, all those in favor? Transfer request from account 3310, 5108 longevity, to account 3310, 6969 medical supplies, 3,500.
I'll make that form of a motion.
Second.
Motion being made in second, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Chief Blakey, request transfer of $12,322 from account 3330, 5107 holiday, to account 3330, 5104 overtime.
I'll make that form of a motion.
Second.
Motion being made in second, all those in favor? Request transfer of 5,000 from account 3330, 5156 sick buy bank, to account 3330, 5104 overtime.
I'll make that form of a motion.
Second.
Motion being made in second, all those in favor? Request transfer 3,495 dollars from account 3330, 5102 to Ask Me Salary, to account 3330, 6928 education.
Make that form of a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Town administrator, request approval of transfers in DPW accounts. $2,000 from 5440, 5101 payroll, to account 5440, 6648 repair and tires.
Make that form of a motion.
Second.
Motion being made in second, all those in favor? $3,000 from account 5440, 6451 snow removal, to account 5440, 6648 repair and tires.
Make that form of a motion.
Second.
All those in favor? $5,000 from account 5440, 5101 payroll, to account 5540, 7423 supplies and miscellaneous.
I'll make that form of a motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Town administrator, request approval of transfers in DPW accounts. 7782 from account 5430, 6711 gas and diesel, to account 5530, 7139 engineering testing permits.
I'll make that form of a motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Chief Blakey again. No, it's all right. Request transfer of $15,000 from account 3330, 5102 Ask Me Salaries, to account 3330, 5104 overtime.
I'll make that form of a motion, but I'm going to have a question.
Second.
I know, I've already asked this question.
What's going on with the overtime?
Is this because of the incident that recently happened?
As you know, we had three major events in three days, and just, it just, all manpower, labor intense, people had to stay on the scene 24 hours a day, protecting three different scenes. It just, they have to be done, continuity of evidence, and that's pretty much the extent of it all. There were three different instances, two incidents together, but different locations. And then we had another incident that required manpower overnight.
That's forty, almost 40 grand.
$21,000 total.
I'd like to have a motion in a second, all those in favor? Request...
Sorry about that.
Well, you couldn't help a lot, that happened. Request transfers of 5,100 from account 3330, 5156 leave buyback, to account 3336, 6667 operations.
I'll make that form of a motion.
Second.
Motion being made in second, all those in favor? Now we're going to go back.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bids and requests for proposals, town administrator, request permission to waive bid process and purchase demo rescue vehicle currently available from, for immediate delivery from Greenwood Fire Apparatus in North Attleboro, Mass. for $273,321 and 10 cents, and 10 cents in the New Year fiscal.
That's for the red light.
Yeah, that's right.
In the forthcoming budget, we had requested 285,000. The administrator asked if we could search to see if there was a unit out there that would meet very close to what we had. There is one demo, it's a leftover, that is a brand-new vehicle, have all the warranties and everything, goes with some of the same manufacturer that we've had our previous rescues that we've had good luck with, and it's $12,000 under what we were anticipating to spend.
Question?
Yes.
Can you specify what the warranty is? How many years? What it covers?
I can, I don't have that in front of me, but I can. Everything would remain as if it was a brand-new vehicle that we were getting, as we had with the other ones.
Five-year 50?
They don't usually go a five-year 50 warranty on them.
Well, I'm thinking Chrysler, so I mean, I'd like to know.
Usually they're warranting them for a year, and then the paint and body is usually warranted for five years.
It's not a long time.
Is this equipped, chief?
No, it is not equipped. That's your truck.
Do we have the equipment to go in it?
Yeah, we would take one of our older units out of service and replace this. Yeah, we would take one of our older units out of service and replace this, put this one in its place.
Does it have the hydraulic lift in the back?
This one would, yes.
Do you remember the brand name?
Horton.
The body?
Horton is the body.
And then chassis is what?
We're buying is international.
International, like, okay.
Which we've had great luck with.
Yeah, yep.
Very good luck with them.
Any further questions? I entertain a motion.
Can we get an extended warranty? Can we negotiate?
We can certainly ask.
Make an extended warranty in here for paying cash?
I have no problem, well, we're not paying cash.
Well, they're going to get paid.
Yeah.
Either way, they get paid.
Either way, they get paid. We, we can certainly ask.
We can ask.
It would be a good faith step.
Sure.
I'll make the motion to authorize the town administrator permission to waive the bid process and purchase demo vehicle, rescue vehicle currently available for immediate delivery from Greenwood Fire Apparatus in North Attleboro, Mass. for $273,321 and 10 cents.
Second.
In the new fiscal year.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor?
Thank you.
Still raise my hand.
It's getting late. I've got the E R nurse, anyway, he's coding.
Thank you.
All right, open forum, there's non-town administrator announcements, could you make it brief?
Yeah, only that I, I supplied the council with a memo, I am still actively pursuing the existing site of DPW Barn for some role to play in the recycling or transfer station conversation. And that will include cleaning the place up and using that space, it's a large space.
Thank you. Town Solicitor, oh, well, I'm sorry, council announcement.
Madam President, I have a brief announcement, I'll make this as quick as I can. I've been telling any number of people who have been complaining about the FTR, that, look, what we really have here is not a problem with spending, it's a problem that we simply don't have enough revenue. One of the issues that I've been talking about, maybe for about, for about a year now, involved the FedEx complex and CCONC. And you'll recall that I was disturbed by this, because I read in the Herald News that it was being described as the Greater Providence Facility for FedEx. I, I heard from Mr. DiSesto, that in fact, when they were looking for the site for this, and I understand, by the way, that Greater Providence involves more than just Rhode Island, but I was a little disturbed to hear from Mr. DiSesto, that they looked at six different sites, I believe you told me, and all six of those sites were in Massachusetts. Now, it appears that they're about to open, they've given a summary in this news article in the Herald News about what the, the numbers come down to. And it points out that, in exchange for public improvements to the roads, water line, water line expansion costing about $2 million, also equipment to ease traffic control impacts, another section says, among the traffic improvements, the Swansea Planning Board requested, was, ways to improve the lanes, islands, and traffic signals at Route 6 and Route 136. It goes on and on, but indicates that the total improvements by the company were $2 million. The total cost of the project is $48 million. And, this is the important part, the amount of taxes to be paid to the town of Tiv, uh, town of CCONC, gee, that was a slip, wasn't it? I was going to say the town of Tiv, the town of CCONC will be $1.7 million a year. And that's why I keep pressing on the issue of trying to get some sort of development in the town of Tiv. It really is not a spending problem that we're faced with in the FTR, it's a revenue problem. And we can see it with the type of lack of commercial development we have in this town.
Thank you.
I just have one, Madam President, that's on, we all got a copy of 2016 Smart Growth Awards, and they have outstanding smart growth leaders, outstanding growth, smart growth projects, and Tiverton Public Library was actually one of the four that got the award for the outstanding smart growth project, so congratulations to the library.
Anything else? Any other council announcements? Town Solicitor announcements?
You have this notice of claim, and the name for the claim isn't in because it's from a minor, but you'll also notice that it does not involve the town, government of the town of Tiv. I'd ask that you deny the claim, I ask that the matter refer it to the inter-local trust, but I also ask that you authorize me to contact the attorney for the claimant here, just to point out that this is something that should have been sent to the school department for their notice, because if in fact, this is a valid claim, they will have primary responsibility, and also, the trust policy for the school department will kick in. I couldn't tell from the notice of claim that was received, whether or not that happened.
Okay, so, you need a motion to deny claim?
Deny, refer to the trust, and authorize Solicitor to contact the attorney for the claimant.
I'll make that in form of a motion.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all those in fa, in favor, again, here we go.